This May 9, 2019, regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and a performance of the National Anthem by the Glasgow Middle School Chorus, under the direction of Miranda Lansbury.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so brightly we held at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave.
In order to comply with Section 2.2, 3712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on May 9, 2019, and to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Mr. Moon, seconded by Ms. Strauss, all those in favor. And that motion is unanimous. Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. So that's Ms. Hines, Mr. Wilson, Mr. Malkelveen, Ms. Darrenack-Cofax, Mr. Moon, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Keys-Gamar, Ms. Evans, Ms. Schultz, Ms. Strauss. Those nays abstaining, abstaining by Ms. Palczek, that motion passes. A few other announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. Mr. Tigner is absent this evening, we will miss him. I would also like to recognize former student representative Neerika Vatakonda, who is in the audience this evening. We also have some Boy Scouts in the audience. They include Chris Jansen, the Scout Master, Bobby King, Elsie Tillman, Joshua Jansen, and David Allen, another Scout Master. Thank you for being here. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. Tonight's agenda is available by going to School Board on the FCPS homepage, selecting Board Docs under "Upcoming School Board Meetings." The meeting is also being streamed live online. Select "School Board" from the full menu, then click on the "Watch Live" button on the School Board Meetings webpage. Please turn off or silence your cellphone. I now call on Mr. Moon for a brief announcement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of recognitions. But before I do that, I would like to take a personal privilege to announce that I would be leaving the meeting a little early today. I have a son graduating from graduate school tomorrow morning, so I'll be taking a late-night flight, 10 o'clock, and then go up to Indianapolis first and drive two hours even farther up, and hopefully be able to get to his graduation before too late, tomorrow morning. With that, let me read Teacher Appreciation Week, May 6 through 10. Every day, the teachers of Fairfax County Public Schools demonstrate their personal and professional dedication to providing an excellent education for the children in our community. Our teachers are committed to ensuring that all children develop their full potentials for academic achievement. Teachers are influential in fostering their students both healthy self-concepts and a sense of civic responsibility. Fairfax County Public Schools value the skills, creativity, and professionalism that characterize our teachers, and we welcome this opportunity to commend our teachers and to recognize the energy, dedication, and vision that they contribute to our school system. Do we have teachers in audience? If there is, please stand. Thank you so much for all you do each and every day for our students. Next, I have Food Allergy Awareness Week, May 12 through 18, 2019. Created in 1998 by the Food Allergy Research and Education, Inc., Food Allergy Awareness Week shines a spotlight on seriousness of food allergies and helps to improve public understanding of this potentially life-threatening medical condition. By increasing awareness, we can encourage respect, promote safety, and improve the quality of life of all those affected by food allergies and anaphylaxis. Food allergies affect up to 15 million Americans, including nearly 6 million children, roughly 2 in every classroom. Nearly 30% of children with food allergies are allergic to more than one food. Every 3 minutes, a food allergy reaction sends someone to the emergency room in the U.S. You can learn more about food allergies and anaphylaxis by visiting the Food Allergy Research and Education website at www.foodallergy.org. Do we have employees working in the food services in the audience? Please stand if you are here. We'll give you applause anyway. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Moon. I now call on Ms. McLaughlin for the recognition of the Internal Audit Awareness Month.
Thank you. As Chairman of the Audit Committee, I am very pleased to be reading this evening's recognition. In order to raise awareness and recognize, our Office of the Auditor General, May has been designated as the Internal Audit Awareness Month. Internal auditors have a very important purpose with complex organizations through the variety of roles and responsibilities. These include provide insight and assess controls. Through their expertise, knowledge, and broad perspective of an organization, internal auditors can evaluate efficiency and effectiveness and provide management and the Board with assurance that the adequate controls are in place to respond to the risks that may threaten an organization. They evaluate the risks. Risks can be everywhere: reputational damage, inefficient operations, fraud, lawsuits, policy violations, regulatory compliance theft, et cetera. Internal auditors assess the significance of the organization's many risks and the effectiveness of the risk management efforts. They communicate this to management and the Board and develop recommendations to improve risk management. They help to improve operations. With a solid understanding of the organization's objectives, internal auditors can examine operations to determine whether they are efficient and effective. They promote ethics. Professional internal auditors abide by a code of ethics that upholds the principles of integrity, objectivity, confidentiality, and competency. They raise red flags when they discover improper conduct. Reviewing processes and procedures. Internal auditors review operations closely and assess whether existing processes are well-designed to help the organization achieve its goals. Monitoring compliance. Internal auditors assess the organization's compliance with applicable laws, regulations, and contracts to ensure that management is addressing these requirements adequately. They also offer insight into the impact that noncompliance would have on an organization and inform senior management and the Board of noncompliance. They also evaluate safeguards. The organization's tangible property, human resources, and intellectual property are valuable and must be guarded against potential damage. Internal auditors evaluate the procedures used to safeguard these assets, and they bring deficiencies to light and make recommendations to enhance protection. They investigate fraud, because fraud can affect any level of an organization. The internal auditor is provided access to all records, as well as the authority to conduct audits and investigate possible fraudulent behavior throughout the organization. And finally, they communicate results. After conducting thorough audits, the internal auditors report their findings and recommend appropriate courses of action to strengthen the organization's success. At this time, I would like to invite our Auditor General, Esther Ko, to join the Board at the dais for a photo. I absolutely would like to see the entire team join us, along with family members and supporters. I was only given the words of the auditor. My apologies.
I now call on Ms. Palczek for a recognition of the Oakton Boys Swim and Dive Team.
This evening, the Fairfax County School Board is pleased to congratulate the Oakton High School Boys Swim and Dive Team as the 2019 Virginia High School League Class VI State Champions. Following their perfect season and winning the Concord District Championship, the team continued their dominating performance in the postseason by winning both the Northern Region and Class VI State Championships. The team's success was a combination of individual and group efforts. Daniel Janis and Anthony Grimm set new 6'8" state records in their individual events, earning All-American designations. Nick Hyman earned the All-American designation in his individual breaststroke event, while Joseph Perol received a recognition for his diving event. The All-American designation is awarded to athletes who equal or beat the National Interscholastic Swimming Coaches Association 2018-19 time and parameters for VHSL swim-and-dive events. The Oakton Cougars Boys Swim and Dive Team is considered one of the strongest in the Commonwealth. The members and coaches are dedicated to excellence and willingly put forth the effort and commitment to achieve the highest level. We wish all of you the best in your future athletic and academic endeavors. At this time, I would like to invite Principal Jamie Lane and her family, coaches Parker Ramsdale, Stephanie Hallick, and Gabby Galvez, and members and family of the Class VI State Champion Oakton High School Boys Swim and Dive Team to join us at the dais for a photo with the Board. Congratulations.
I love it. Oakton Boys, I just want to say thank you again for coming out. I think this is the largest turnout we've had of a whole team coming for this honor. It was wonderful for you and your families to be here for this incredible state championship celebration.
I now call on Mr. Wilson for a recognition of National Adult and Continuing Education Month.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Adult and Community Education ACE Program of Fairfax County Public Schools began with an action by the School Board in 1955, and in the over 60 years of the program's existence, thousands of adults have learned essential skills. In addition, the Fairfax County Adult High School has given adults the opportunity to earn a high school diploma or certification of high school equivalency through the GED program. Through the years, the ACE program has provided adult students with the opportunity to learn English, learn new languages, acquire job skills, transition to new careers, and grow as workers, citizens, and parents. The Fairfax County community has looked to ACE to help develop our workforce, provide solutions to community problems through education, and create a culture of lifelong learning for residents of all ages. Adult and Community Education and the Fairfax County Adult High School program have made major contributions to the school system as a laboratory of innovation for the piloting of new programs and services in support of pre-K through 12 education through high school completion, family literacy, summer programs, extended day programs, enrichment courses, and driver's education. Through creative programming and targeted advocacy for the adult learner, as well as providing enrichment opportunities for youth beyond the school day, ACE and the Fairfax County Adult High School programs have helped to create a dynamic learning community for all generations in Fairfax County. At this time, I would like to invite staff from the Instructional Services Department to please join me at the dais with my other Board members for a photo. The Board.
The next order of business is citizen participation. Tonight, eight citizens have signed up to address the Board, and we also have two video testimonies. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to no more than three minutes. The School Board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with the decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. Please be mindful that there are often young children in attendance at these meetings or watching at home, so language should be appropriate for all age levels. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to those who have come to speak to us tonight. I'm going to call the first three speakers. Amber Bechler, Lynn Schmouter, and Tina Williams.
Good evening. My name is Amber Bechler, and I'm a resident of Herndon, Virginia. And I just wanted to thank those in the Board in support of LGBTQ-inclusive FLE program. You know, it's been about a year or so, and so far, the gender binary hasn't broken down, so I think we're pretty safe at this point. But really, it seems like such a small thing to just add sexual orientation, gender identity, and changing of the language around assigned at birth. But for someone who grew up not knowing anyone else who was like myself, it is very important to see that in the school system. One of the big challenges for being LGBTQ is that you may very well be the only person in your family. In both sides of my family, I'm one of three, and out of two, I'm the, and only two of us are trans, and I didn't know about the other one until I came out, because they had been ostracized from one side of the family. And so, we have to find our elders. We have to find our examples. And for many of us, we don't meet. We have to find our examples, and for many of us, we don't meet people like us until we are out and able to really explore. And so, the first time I met someone else who was trans was three years ago. And just having that example in schools, to have that kind of language. Now, it's very different with social media and with the Internet and being able to connect, but still, it's seeing that the school and that the system and the institution is recognizing that we exist, and because we do, because, you know, there are more and more families, not just in Fairfax County, but in all across the world. And so, seeing now that the institution and the programs are catching up to where society has been for a very long time is very reassuring. And to a point where me coming here to thank you for that will be a thing of the past, and that really, it'll just be something people don't even think about anymore. And so, once again, thank you so much for your support, and continue to thank you and continue to support the LGBTQ community. Thank you.
Lynn Schmouter. Tina Williams.
Good evening, school board members, and happy Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of my members. I'm Tina Williams, President of Fairfax County Federation of Teachers. During a national educator shortage, our education professionals are leaving this county or profession entirely. Excessive workloads, surmounting class sizes, and constant work demands outside of contract hours. Staff pay does not keep pace with the market or cost to live, let alone how we should be valuing education professionals. IA pay and treatment on the job dishonors their contribution and professionalism. Special education retention is a red flag with dramatic burnout rates. The district hears these same stories just as we do. These critical issues are constantly reported on work environment, and they are not new issues. We don't need more data, we need action. To address the retention crisis, FCFT is advocating for increased staffing in high-impact areas. Members tell us that workloads are directly tied to understaffing. Stagnant staffing ratios have not kept pace with increasing special education needs in ELL populations, expanding class sizes, and students requiring more individual attention. FCFT supports increasing the number of IAs, behavior specialists, and nurses to adequately support all students and teachers. We must pay IAs a fair and livable wage. The IA compression scales, a few years ago, created a significant inequity that must be addressed. Paraprofessionals cannot survive on the single income rate that they have, even as we ask them to educate and support our children with the most needs. Poverty wages are not caring culture. Thank you to Karen Corbett Sanders for your advocacy to move the IA scales to at least fifty percent of teacher salaries, and board members supporting this, including Dahlia, Sandy, and Megan. To retain the best and brightest, several policy implementation practices must change. Installing a truly anonymous unbuds practice where employees can report worksite issues without the fear of reprisal, just as parents can, is essential. Professional educators, especially IAs, need more professional development and career mobility. Student discipline must be equally and equitably enforced and audited in all schools. We look forward to working with you on these. Your decisions reflect how you value FCPS educational staff, not just in your words, but in funding. The budget request does not fully reflect the needs on the ground. We can no longer put off addressing these needs. Stronger staff equals stronger students. Thank you.
Tricia Ramon, followed by Linda Wu.
Hello, my name is Tricia Ramon, and I'm a student at FCPS. I'm grateful to have the opportunity to address the FCPS school board about a problem I've noticed in my school and other schools that I know if fixed will lead to a more environmentally-informed student body: the lack of recycling. Personally, I went to a middle school where recycling was highly enforced, and I knew from my peers that seeing recycling executed in schools influenced kids to recycle at home. However, at my high school, many classrooms did not have recycling bins in class, and during lunch, we mainly trashed our food, including recyclable items, including plastic bottles. High schools throughout FCPS face an epidemic of a lack of recycling, but there are also large disparities amongst the high school. According to the FCPS Get to Green website, West Potomac High School recycled 9.09% of their waste, while McLean High School recycled 30.53%. If one school can recycle nearly one-third of their waste, all other schools can and should be able to do the same. We need to work on implementation, especially since the infrastructure has already been developed in Regulation 8541. Our goal should be to standardize our approach to recycling, where all schools are equally conscientious and conduct the same practices. Furthermore, we need to reduce our paper consumption in schools. I have seen students printing unnecessary amounts of paper, and I've also seen tons of them using only single-sided printing, further wasting paper. I propose that we implement a new rule that students pay ten cents per page for black-and-white printing. We want students to realize that every time they print something, they are using precious natural resources. A concern of this program could be the potential harm inflicted upon students on free or reduced lunch, but because of the minimal cost for printing and the move towards electronic learning, I'm confident the program is achievable. I have firsthand knowledge about how easy and effective this program was in another FCPS high school, and how it allowed students to behave in a more environmentally-conscious manner. By charging for printing, we can create an exponential decrease in paper use and also provide economic benefits to FCPS. By further enforcing recycling and implementing the paid printing program in all FCPS schools, we are advocating for students' success in a future world and creating a generation that is both knowledgeable and informed about how their actions directly impact the environment. Thank you.
Linda Wu, followed by Mary Mathewson.
Hi, okay. My name is Linda Wu, and I'm a junior at Woodson High School, and thank you guys for letting me speak today. Ten years ago, our nation's capital implemented a five-cent tax on plastic bags. Just last January, DC banned the usage of plastic straws in restaurants and businesses. Our nation's capital, the center of our government, less than twenty miles away, is enacting these legislative reforms. So why isn't Virginia? The answer is because we're Dylan's Law State. We need Richmond to give us permission to even touch outdated legislation. So if the General Assembly won't let us protect our earth and for my future generation and my children's generation, then we have to do it ourselves, and that starts where we have the jurisdiction in our school system. China, one of the biggest buyers of recycled material, has announced its National Sword Plan to cut off importation of recycled material by 2020. Why? One reason is because too much recycled material has been contaminated. I see this when I'm collecting recycled material for my Science National Honors Society. I see half-finished coffee cups tossed carelessly into recycling bins, and it's not their fault that they aren't aware of what can and cannot be recycled. It's our fault. Part of the Goal One is that our system, school system, makes sure that students graduate as active participants of their local and global community. One of the propositions that I have for you today is to increase student and faculty awareness of what can and cannot be recycled. Things like takeout food containers, plastic bags, and styrofoam, among other things, cannot be put into the recycling bin. This is something that me, myself, was not aware of until I did further research. Last June, Fairfax spent over $55,000 collecting and processing recycled material. Part of that cost was to take out what couldn't be recycled from what could. So let's work together to encourage recycling and make sure that it isn't a financial burden on our community.
Mary Mathewson, followed by Norm Hall.
Hi again. I'm Mary Mathewson, and I teach English at West Potomac High School. I'm here tonight also to thank you for adopting the current, more inclusive, FLE curriculum. So instead of a call to action, since we don't need it anymore, let me read you a poem that I found on the Amnesty International curriculum page. It's called "Be Decked" by Victoria Riddell. Tell me it's wrong, the scarlet nails my son's sports, or the toy store rings he clusters, four jewels to each finger. He's bedecked. I see the other mothers looking at the star choker, the rhinestone strand he fastens over his sock. Sometimes I help him find sparkle clip-ons when he says sticker earrings look too fake. Tell me I should teach him it's wrong to love the glitter, that a boy is only a boy who'd love a truck with a remote that revs, batteries slamming into corners, or Hot Wheels loop-de-looping off tracks into the tub. Then tell me it's fine, really, maybe even a good thing, a boy who's got some girl to him, and I'm right for the days he wears a pink shirt on the seesaw in the park. Tell me what you need to tell me, but keep far away from my son, who still loves a beautiful thing not for what it means, this way or that, but for the way facets set off prisms, and prisms spin up everywhere, and from his own jeweled body, he's casting rainbows, made every shining color true. Now try to tell me, man or woman, your heart was ever once that brave. Thank you for being brave, thank you for embracing the rainbow that is all our children.
Mr. Hall, followed by Dominic Strachidine.
Good evening. Let me start by reading how students with disabilities appear in tonight's Strategic Plan Report. One, furthermore, the Students with Disabilities student subgroup actually performed higher on the reading SOL test, fifty percent, than on progress reports, forty-seven percent. Continued efforts are needed to ensure all students have the appropriate instructional supports to reach grade-level reading expectations. Two, AAP students in the English learner and Students with Disability groups were the two exceptions, with both these student groups showing improvements in past advanced SOL performance. Three, similarly, the percentage of students who earned a passing final mark for one or more honors or APIB course held steady for most student groups but declined for the Black English learner and with disability student groups in both metrics. Four, Data Appendix Reading and Mathematics Summary, the following table provides disaggregated school year results for Students with Disabilities subgroup. So, one, this means that a fifty percent pass rate, whether on the SOL reading test or in coursework, merits no further conversation. There are references in our twice-exceptional students within AAP classes at the primary Level II and in honors IBAP classes III without any context about all the struggles this class of students faces. And then we have four, disaggregate data dump with disability type but not presented in such a way as to support analysis of educational settings as in placement and self-contained team-taught or specialized programs. I can't offer constructive criticism, I'm going to move on. Where are students in the disabilities in the Strategic Focus Report? Seriously, I'm asking, because no matter how busy the pages of this report are, there is zero strategic focus devoted with students with disabilities. In my opinion, this is how FCPS gets into trouble with the community. It's not that you go off in a bad direction, rather signs of trouble are missed, ignored, or put off rather than met head-on. And whenever a report suggests looking at return on investment, I wonder about the lack of strategic investments being made or even contemplated in the name of special education. Damage control is what makes your headlines these days. So look, while I've stood before you more often as the advocacy chair of SEPTA than any other SEPTA representative, I am not its face, nor are the other members who make presentations. If you attended our awards ceremony last Saturday, that is where you would have seen the face and heard the voice of SEPTA. It was in the smiles, singing and dancing of children who are celebrating the differences being made to help them fulfill their goals. These are differences being made by fellow students, teachers, instructional assistants, and yes, the administrators and community partners who understand that what puts the special into special education is the loving kindness and concern for the individuals who are sometimes bereft of individuality during meetings, ironically during meetings that are abbreviated only in name as individual education plans. If you were there last Saturday, I would not have to tell you to visualize and hear whose future is at stake with true strategic planning. My job is to help you draw the connections between their genuine inclusive participation, one, Fairfax, versus the frustration and limitations in the FCPS strategic planning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Dominic.
Hello, Chair Sanders and the board. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak before you tonight. My name is Dominic Strachidine, and I'm a senior at George Mason University studying environmental policy. I have a strong passion for the environment and sustainability, and I'm looking to improve the curriculum surrounding sustainability and environmental affairs within FCPS. The portrait of a graduate as outlined in Goal One of Student Success is designed to give students the tools necessary to become critical thinkers and problem solvers within their communities. With issues in sustainability become more prevalent as more politicians begin to include more information on their platforms, companies include more sustainability techniques for growth, educational institutions are incorporating these changes into their curriculum to prepare their students for careers in policy, business, and science, and everything in between. The inclusion of ideas and practices in sustainability, like the Sustainable Development Goals put forth by the United Nations, and the portrait of a graduate capstone projects will effectively prepare students for life by giving them the tools to become problem solvers and critical thinkers by working in collaborative environments that work to address a problem within their community. The Sustainable Development Goals themselves focus on improving social equity, ensuring economic growth, and advocating for environmental sustainability. I can speak to the effectiveness of these programs with the understanding that students must have the sufficient background knowledge on environmental affairs, and this can be done by addressing the meaningful learning goals set forth within the Goal One. Specifically, I can speak to the effectiveness of programs like these because I have taken Dr. Dan Sklerou's class on Sustainability in Action at George Mason University. It's the capstone class for those involved in my major of environmental and sustainability studies. I am now prepared, as a result of this class, to apply my knowledge and experiences gained while being at Mason. This class calls for the immersion in the SDGs by allowing students to tackle community issues. I addressed Goal Two of No Hunger by addressing food waste and food recovery by creating partnerships between student groups at Mason and area food and homeless shelters, beginning public awareness campaigns, and assisting in food recovery efforts. In order to take on these issues, maybe consider a partnership between the faculty of FCPS and the faculty of George Mason University where these things are being actively engaged. Sustainability is the future, and FCPS must be able to prepare students for the changing world that is moving more towards sustainable techniques of growth and management. Thank you very much for your time.
We now have two video testimonies.
These photos were posted by school staff to Twitter. I have edited these pictures to obscure the faces, but on Twitter, the faces are clear and other information is sometimes included, such as student name and personal details. These pictures are publicly available for anyone to see even without a Twitter account. Parents did not give permission to the school to share these pictures, and you may be surprised that this does not violate school policy, but it worries me. It does not feel right. It is not best practice. I'll take a break here to show you the photos posted by SAC. There are no photos because the SAC policy is to not share student photos unless given explicit permission. Many other public school systems, private schools, and childcare facilities require permission to share photos. Many have password-protected sites for sharing and policies against posting on public sites such as Twitter. Why don't FCPS students have this protection? There is an option to opt-out, but when I talk to other parents, they are not even aware that their children's pictures are being posted to social media, let alone that they can opt-out. In addition, it is difficult for teachers and administrators to respect parents' wishes when they opt-out. With hundreds of students and dozens of faculty, it is just unrealistic for every teacher to keep to keep track of who has opted out. I did opt out my son, and even then his picture was tweeted. The current policy puts students and FCPS at risk since there is no monitoring of social media posts or even a complete list of all accounts that are posting. I believe the teachers and staff had good intentions but are not considering the risks of the public postings. Photos on Twitter do not benefit the education of our students, so why are we taking these risks? I am trying to teach my son to be careful about social media and especially photos, and he is getting the opposite message at school. The policy should be changed.
Good evening, School Board members, Dr. Braybrand and senior staff. My name is Robert Bigby Jr. I have been teaching in FCPS for 20 years and am the president of Fairfax County Public Schools Pride. FCPS Pride is a social welfare organization which envisions a public school system in Fairfax which is welcoming, respectful, and safe for each person regardless of gender identity, gender expression, or sexual orientation. I want to thank you for retaining the portions of our family life education program which teach about sexual orientation, gender identity, and LGBTQ people. Its development and implementation are part of an ongoing process of growing respect and support for all members of our community that I have seen in my two decades teaching in Fairfax County. I want to thank the School Board but also the senior staff who have passed, created, and implemented these programs. They make more of a difference than you know. They make a difference in their own right, of course, but also by creating an atmosphere in our school system in which LGBTQ students, LGBTQ employees, and LGBTQ family members can feel that they are welcomed as full and equal members of the larger community. You know that I am not reticent about telling you when I disagree with you, but I want to take this opportunity just to say thanks for so many things, only one of which is an inclusive family life education curriculum. Thank you for listening.
Since Mr. Tigner is away this evening, we will go on to the Fiscal Year 20 Approved Budget Presentation by Dr. Braybrand.
Good evening Chairman Corbett Sanders and members of the School Board. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to kind of give you an update on where we are with the school budget. Many of you know that the Board of Supervisors actually approved their budget just earlier this week, a unanimous vote that included fully funding our school's request for the second year in a row. And I want to thank the entire Board of Supervisors and County Executive Brian Hill for making that a reality, and I hope two years down and many, many, many more years to come with a similar outcome. I do want you to know tonight, just kind of updating you and the public and everyone on where we are with our FY '20 budget, it's changed very little from five months ago when you approved it in February. And I want to just go over a couple of things since then, some small changes and tweaks for you to be aware of. First of all, on the revenue side, you did approve at the third quarter budget adjustment, a set aside to fund a revision of the FY '20 teacher salary scale. You know, we finally worked on getting that BA lanes piece straight and we restored those lanes, so $1 million will be added to the FY '20 beginning balance. That is one-time dollars that will have to build into the base for next year, but we did make that change at the third quarter adjustment. I also wanted you to know that when we had first come to you in January with the state aid, we were looking at the governor's proposed budget. And of course, the General Assembly finished its work really in late March, and in the final negotiations, there was a slight decline in state aid, really across the board in the Commonwealth, but to FCPS it was $3.7 million. They changed the 5% compensation timeline, they changed the month at which that would happen, and then there was also a change to the counselor-student ratios which funded less counselors. So all of that added up to about $3.7 million loss in state aid. I want you to know though how we're working and have worked to successfully address those issues. Again, on the expenditure side now, we are recognizing the BA lanes, and again, that will let us provide 23 steps with no grandfathering and no elimination of that BA plus 30 lane. The second item, we've been able to find healthcare savings. We looked at the analysis of changes to healthcare elections, that happens every year, and we've seen that a number of employees are moving to a more modest healthcare plan. This is saving our operating fund by 3.1 million, and a lot of that is premium-driven. It's a lower premium for our employees and they're moving to a lower premium plan. It's also come to our attention that the bus radio replacement project that we've been working on really for some time has been delayed. We had in this budget 1.2 million to pay for system maintenance and support, not the purchase of the radios but the support structure around once those radios would be operational. It is likely, it is the case now with the delay that will only need support for six months in the year next year, and that will be a savings of $600,000. So we will be able to deal with the cut in state aid by those following changes. I want to just show you a few other things that you already know, you've seen these charts before, but just as a reminder of, we have a $3 billion school operating fund and it represents a 4% increase. Those are rounded numbers. And this is a budget that continues to focus on instructional programs. 80% of our budget is allocated to instructional programs. We've talked about it before, if you looked at the budget in terms of total dollars, 90% of our budget is around employee compensation. Just as a reminder, this budget is a budget where we took those first steps to begin to align our budget to the strategic plan, and you can see all of the goal areas, student success, caring culture, premier workforce, and resource stewardship. All of those are there and broken out by those categories. I'm not going to go through each one of them at the moment, but I wanted to remind you of those, and I will quickly just show you the slides around each of those goals. Student success, you can see all the instructional programs we talked about giving additional support for. We also have, as you well know, this board, the Staffing Initiatives placeholder, we have about $6 million in that, and we have amendments and follow-on motions that we've been talking about at our budget work sessions, and we have budget work sessions actually scheduled for next Monday and Thursday so that we can really finalize what will go into that placeholder. We have the Staffing Initiatives for Staffing Reserve replenishment at 4.3 million, and as you recall, we have the decrease in enrollment and the adjustment for that. For Goal 2, caring culture, you can see the breakouts there around mental health, safety, and healthcare, creating that equity and positive support behavior position, and we look forward to also talking to you in June when we're going to bring the results of our discipline report and study along with consultant insights and reports at your June work session. And then finally, there was a small amount as a result of skip recommendations for initiatives with playgroups. Finally, or not finally, but Goal 3 with Premier Workforce, we really got to make the focus of our budget this year, getting our pay right, especially for our teachers. We did our teacher salary scale enhancement to get them back to market-competitive, that included a 1% MSA. This was a budget that included step increases that were on average 2.6% plus the 1% MSA for our non-teachers. We made the changes to the BA lane salary scale, we did bonuses for those at the top of the scale, and I know many board members are still, one of the amendments out there for you to look at is doing something other than the bonuses. We talked about parent liaisons and put that in for those between 20 and 24 hours, giving full benefits. We addressed the living wage, and I recognize there's some additional review of that that you all are doing, and we recognize base savings. We talked about employer retirement contributions, small changes to that, and support for equity and employee relations to really make sure that we're honoring our commitment to a workplace that is free from bullying and harassment and making sure that we're giving timely responses in our schools and offices to those who come forward with concerns. In Goal 4, resource stewardship, we talked to you about some contractual service increases that we needed to deal with, some utility increases that we needed to deal with, and a small slight savings to the school construction fund. When we look at our revenue, and again, those were the breakdown of our additional dollars we asked for by goal, our revenue summary, we talked about how important that county support is, it makes up over 71% of our budget. The state revenue to FCPS is nearly 24% of our budget. And as many of you know, while that is an increase and we're pleased this year that we got more money from the state, that's still half almost of the average from other divisions that they get in state aid. So we want to continue to work, and I'm going to continue to work to do everything I can working with this board to extend our influence in Richmond around supporting, funding for our schools. The revenue overview, again, just for a quick reminder that for this year, the beginning balance was a little over a million, the county transfer request is there, the state revenue additional is there now, a little bit additional money in federal aid but not much, and we've talked already as we presented the Special Education Annual Plan to you a little earlier in the [inaudible]. Mandate, it's really one of the biggest unfunded mandates that we have, and then a slight increase to other revenue which is mostly around Fairfax City tuition. Finally, I just want to remind you all as part of the budget timeline, we have opportunities for the community to come forward to you all as the School Board and give final feedback. We're going to have a budget work session on Monday, we've been able to add in a little bit more time so there can be more discussion, and then public hearings are scheduled for Tuesday, May 14th, and perhaps the 15th depending on how many folks we have out on the 14th. We'll also have a budget work session then next Thursday on the 16th. And then finally, we'll have adoption of the budget on May 23rd, and we have that timeline up there available. I'll be glad to take any questions, but I thought this was an important update just for you and the board and for the public knowing that the Board of Supervisors has completed their budget work. We are really poised to finish and be in the last phase of doing these work sessions and closing on an approved budget for Fairfax County Public Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand, for giving us the context for some robust discussion next week on the budget. As you mentioned, we will be continuing our discussions next week and we will be having public hearings next week as well, with May 23rd being the date that we will adopt, that is scheduled for adopting the budget. With that, I do have a couple of questions from my colleagues. Ms. Schultz, please.
So thank you, Dr. Braybrand, for giving us that overview. Can we go back a couple of points that you said? You said that the state is funding now counselors at a lower rate. Can you give us any insight to that? Is it a lower per pupil? Is it high school? Is it all levels?
Yeah, I'm probably going to have to go back. I think it was an overall staffing ratio. Teresa, do you remember off the top of your head? I'll go back and get those numbers. They did do a final change, yeah. I'll go back and get that information and put it in the next Braybrand briefing.
I would like that because that's very disappointing to hear, especially since I thought we were going in the right direction on that.
Okay, actually, maybe we do have the answer. Lee, do you have the update from the state on that with the counselors?
Yes, well, I can tell you that the governor's proposed budget stepped out with a pretty significant reduction to the counselor ratios at elementary, middle, and high school, and appropriate funding that went with that, of course, and that was a proposed change to the standards of quality ratios. But the General Assembly, when they did their deliberations, decided to increase it slightly. So the ratios are still going down from what's currently in the SOQ, they're just not going down as much as the governor wanted them to.
So I'm sorry, are you saying that the Virginia State Board of Education reduced the counselor ratio in their SOQs?
Now, no, remember that reducing the ratio increases the number of counselors.
Well, I meant reduce the number of counselors to students, therefore increasing the ratio.
No, reduce the increase that the governor proposed.
Okay, so it wasn't as much as we thought it was going to be?
Exactly.
Okay, all right, okay. That's a little convoluted, so this is, you know, words matter. So it's not that the governor cut counselors, it's that we didn't increase it as much as we had hoped.
That's correct.
Okay, so that's a very crucial, I mean, this is like when we talk about budget cuts, and you know, I know it's not popular to say, but we don't, our budget is not basically ever cut, it just doesn't grow as much as we want. So I think it's important because that was a little bit of a shocker for me to hear because I hadn't heard anything about that, but not growing as much as we had hoped, eh, a little different. And then you also said that the funding for the state for the return, and I mean, we get like 17 cents on the dollar back from the state just overall. So what, can you go through again what that ratio difference is for us versus other divisions? You said we get less than half of, now is that as a percentage?
Roughly, I want to say it's like roughly state aid represents 45% of most school budgets. Again, I'm talking off my memory, and ours is about 23, 24%. That's not quite half, but it's close.
So I would love, if it's possible, if it's not too difficult, I think a table, I mean, I think there are 138 school divisions in Virginia.
Oh, I see the percentage.
And to just show the percentage because we know we're going to be like the most impacted. So I think that that would be helpful for a lot of reasons. And then the last question I have for tonight, I had previously asked, and I thought we were including, and I did not see it tonight, that I think that when we report our budget, I think we should state the unfunded federal amount. And I thought we had gotten to an agreement, and I was happy, and then now it's gone again. So I would like, I would like that to come back. I think it is important to show the amount that is not actually being funded for various students, including, you know, military-connected youth, that is unfunded by the federal government that should, because that's really a budget gap.
Yeah, sorry about that.
It's like the 7% for IDEA instead of 40%, that's what you're looking for.
Right. But I think that that should be presented, that we're having to make up that gap, and I think, I mean, again, I thought we had agreed that it would be a part of these presentations. I would like that because that's a part of a public narrative that is important for, because the Fairfax County residents are having to pick up the difference.
I'll be glad to address that, sorry we didn't include it in here.
Thank you.
Yes, Keys Gamar?
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. I really just want to clarify, and you've said this, but I really want to say it for the public, I see 81 million for employee compensation. I know last year, we also had a significant investment to try to bring our salaries up to market. So was it about 40 million last year, I believe?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and so this year, it's another 40 million? Is it, it's not this whole 81 million?
No, it was about 55 million this year. But we believe, taken together with last year, that we've really taken the final step in restoring our teacher salary scales to market-competitive scales.
Okay, so we're about halfway through our efforts right now, so if we...
No, 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 this budget would allow us to complete the catch-up to market-competitive salaries.
What, yes, what I'm clarifying is the checks that our staff get today is only about half of what we're going to do.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
And then with the approval of this budget, that will be the other
That's right.
...part that we believe brings it up to market.
And Ms. Keys Gamar, that's just such an excellent point. Last year, the average raise for the teacher, the average raise was over 6%. Again, working to do that catch-up. We will do another raise with this budget that you pass in the next week, again, an over 6% increase. We have not had back-to-back wage increases like that for teachers in decades.
In decades, correct. So... So, part of the reason, I mean, I'm hearing the buzz in the community still that, you know, we're still behind Arlington, to your knowledge, and other districts. Arlington was the only one I saw mentioned recently. Will this put us kind, where would this put us in relation to some of the surrounding? Once this is implemented?
Right. We think we will be in that sweet spot of being market-competitive between ninety-five and one-hundred-and-five percent. It's true, right, because everybody's going through this process, that when the smoke clears, we need to take another fine eye and see where we then are, reset to the market. But that's our best understanding, with the best information we have, and we promise, I commit to you, that we're going to continue to do that market monitoring and make sure we never fall behind again in Fairfax County Public Schools.
But I just wanted to make that clear, because there's so much chatter in the community right now, that there is going to be about another fifty-one million investment.
Yes, fifty-five point two.
Fifty-five point two.
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect, thank you.
Ms. Hines?
Yeah, and I don't want to be repetitive, but that has also come up, you know, it's on social media now in the last few days, in particular, that a story of a teacher, a Fairfax County teacher, who is leaving Fairfax County to make twelve thousand dollars more a year in Arlington, and that's the actual figure that was given. And last time I looked, we didn't have any point on the pay scale where we are twelve thousand dollars behind Arlington. Now, that's a specific question we may not have an answer to right now, but that sounds larger to me than the reality.
Yeah, I'll certainly be glad to look into that. We are very, very aware, the whole purpose of this multi-year plan is to end that narrative. The best pay for salary and for total compensation over a career is going to be in Fairfax County Public Schools. That is the goal, that's what we've been working toward, and I really think this is going to be the last step. But frankly, it's kind of like we were just saying, this is still, this year was still halfway through finishing what next year, we won't have, I hope, those kind of stories. And I'm not ready to claim that what's being shared on social media is one-hundred percent accurate in terms of that spread between us and any other jurisdiction.
Yeah, and I'll just close, because I can tell you, you know, I teach in Arlington, right? And so, I'm watching the scale pretty closely, right?
Good, we want you back in Fairfax.
Where I am, you know, sort of in the middle, I'm a twelfth or thirteenth-year teacher, and it's pretty comparable right now. That's my personal experience, so.
And Ms. Hines, we actually have the supplemental retirement that Arlington doesn't. Okay. With that, Dr. Braybrand, we look forward to a robust discussion next week on the budget.
Thank you all very much for your support, and I look forward to continuing to collaborate next week. And it's really been another great budget year, and I really appreciate your leadership in working with the administration to make that happen. So, thank you all very much.
So, Dr. Braybrand, before you leave, are you going to introduce Dr. Presidio for the Goal One Student Success Report?
Well, yes, I would be glad to do that. You know, it is, it is exciting when we talk about the budget, that we make sure we're getting a chance to talk about things that the budget funds. And the most important thing, the pillar of our strategic plan is student success, and you're going to get tonight one of the medias, best presentations that I think this board has ever seen around student success. And it is my high honor and privilege to introduce to you Dr. Sloan Presidio, our Assistant Superintendent for Instructional Services.
All right, well, thank you very much, Dr. Braybrand. I appreciate the introduction, and you set a very high bar, which I also appreciate, though, thank you very much. So, I would like to start out this evening, just first recognizing all the folks that have worked so hard to contribute to this particular report, starting with the staff and instructional services, members of the leadership team, members of the Office of Research and Strategic Improvement. And I'd also like to acknowledge really the work of this board to actually streamline and focus the strategic plan. I think the focus that you've created is providing more clarity on the goals and the outcomes that matter most in our strategic plan, especially as they pertain to student success. And personally, I say all the time that in Fairfax County, I believe that we can do anything, we just can't do everything. So, the efforts of this board to provide greater strategic focus to our work is greatly appreciated, so I wanted you to know that. But even with those efforts, of course, there's a lot to report on in Goal One. Goal One actually makes up fifty percent of the entire strategic plan and contains twenty-two board-approved performance metrics. The full narrative for Goal One is over sixty pages this year, and contains detailed information on each of those board-approved twenty-two metrics. So, there is a lot of information here, no doubt, but I'm very excited by the new report format that was established by the Office of Research and Strategic Improvement this year, because I do think it will help the public better understand our division's student achievement results within the context of our continuous improvement efforts. And I know that that's something that members of this board have been striving towards for a long time, is that idea of data analysis within context. So, the full report is posted on Board Docs, and I will reference it in this evening's presentation, but the presentation will focus mostly on the three outcomes and the twenty-two metrics. But before looking at the specific board-approved metrics, I would like to share a few high-level successes related to Goal One. As you can see here, FCPS high schools continue to be ranked among the most rigorous schools in the nation, and our students continue to score significantly higher than state averages and national averages on the ACT and the SAT. For example, our students score one hundred and sixty-four points higher on the SAT than national averages. At the same time, our graduation rates are high, and more than ninety-two percent of our graduates do report work-based learning experiences well in high school. Additionally, you can see that ninety-six percent of our schools exceeded the federal benchmark for English language learner growth, and our pre-K program was recently recognized as a national exemplar program. Also, for those students who don't have the opportunity to participate in pre-K, we've initiated a new Bridge-to-K program that's serving a growing number of students, and those students are achieving exceptional growth. Finally, all of our schools now have teachers who've been trained in inquiry-based education and instructional methods like project-based learning, which are better going to be able to support our students in making portrait of a graduate growth. So, we really have a lot to be proud of as a school system, and there's no doubt, though, that we continue to face challenges as they pertain to student success, in particular gaps in opportunity, access and achievement for all of our students. So, before we dig into examining those results, I'd like to just remind folks about how our demographics in Fairfax County compare to the state as a whole and divisions around the state. So, as you know, we educate almost fifteen percent of the students in the entire state, but more importantly, we serve a growing number of students who are economically disadvantaged, it might be English language learners, or they might have multiple risk factors. So, as you can see on the chart, we actually serve almost one-third of all of the English language learners in the state of Virginia. And I think it's important to keep some of these statistics in mind as they pertain to our student demographics, as we start to look at our performance data in more detail. So, first, what I would like to do is just kind of orient you to how the presentation is going to be organized. Essentially, I've organized the presentation around each of the three desired outcomes in the strategic plan. First, that we will eliminate gaps in opportunity, access, and achievement for all students. Second, that all families will access high-quality early learning experiences. And third, that all of our students will continuously progress in their development of portrait of a graduate attributes. Also, I'd like to note that you see that there are twenty board-approved metrics associated with closing gaps, so the majority of this presentation will be focused on those particular metrics aimed at that outcome. And additionally, since we have twenty metrics associated with closing gaps, I've organized the various metrics into categories. And the first category that we're going to look at contain the metrics that are related to reading and math. So, this slide summarizes some of the key takeaways associated with those metrics. And first and foremost, it's important to point out that unfortunately, our reading and math SOL pass rates did not make progress towards the board's performance target in this reporting period. And additionally, as you will see, we have persistent achievement gaps, which are prevalent among many of our student groups as well. But I do want to point out that there's also good news here, because we're seeing gains in the percentage of third-grade students who are reading at or above grade level. So, this is the first of many charts that we're going to look at, and there's an awful lot of information here. So, what I'd like to do is just take a minute to kind of walk you and the public through how you actually would want to read these charts. And the first chart we're looking at is reading SOL performance across the division in grades three through twelve. And the first thing that you'll note on the bottom of the table is the baseline information. So, these charts are going to compare our current performance to our baseline performance. And the baseline is calculated really as the average of the prior three years of performance. And you can see those bars associated with the baseline performance for each of those student groups, and that bar is always going to be dark blue to indicate the baseline performance. Also, it's important to remember that we're looking at school year seventeen, eighteen performance data. So, the table also indicates the performance data for each of our subgroups for school year seventeen, eighteen. And you'll also notice that for the first time, we've established specific targets for performance. And the progress towards meeting these performance targets is going to be shown on the graph with the colored bars. And there are three different possibilities with respect to current performance. The first, if you see a yellow bar, as we do for all of our student groups on this particular chart, the yellow bar is going to mean that progress was not met toward the board-established performance target for that particular student group. Some of the charts, you'll see the light teal-colored bar, and that's going to indicate that progress for that particular student group was made, and a dark teal bar is going to indicate that the performance target was actually met. And then finally, you'll see that there's an overall performance indicator. And here, you can see with respect to reading performance, overall, we're ranked as yellow and no progress being met on this particular performance indicator. So, to look at the particular data on this chart in a little bit more detail, again, we're looking at reading SOL pass rates in grades three through twelve, and we see, again, that the overall performance indicator was, progress was not made during the reporting period. And in fact, when you look at the chart, you'll notice that the pass rates declined for most of our student groups. And the most striking declines were for the English learner group, Hispanic students, and economically disadvantaged student groups. And I want to point out that one of the major factors with respect to these results was the state's removal of the Virginia Grade Level Alternative Assessment, or the VGLA. So, the VGLA was removed by the state in seventeen, eighteen, and it had been used in the prior year by over twenty-one hundred of our English language learners as a substitute test for the SOL. So, we can see that English learner performance was clearly impacted by the removal of that assessment. Additionally, of those over twenty-one hundred English learners, seventy-five percent of those students were also in the Hispanic student group, and eighty-four percent of those students who had accessed the VGLA were in the economically disadvantaged group. So, you can see the disproportionate impact that the state's removal of the VGLA had on those three particular student groups. But as I said, we still have some positive news as it relates to reading, and you see that as you look at this next metric, which is looking at reading performance of third-grade students as reported by their teachers that are reading above or at, excuse me, at or above grade level. And when you look at this metric, I think it's actually a better performance indicator, perhaps, than the SOL, because this metric is actually based on multiple assessment points over the course of the year, where students have to demonstrate their reading mastery and performance-based situations with their teachers. And here, you can see that all of our student groups actually made progress in seventeen, eighteen on this metric. This chart reports the pass rates for math SOLs in grades three through twelve. So, again, similar to the reading chart, overall progress towards the performance target was not made, and we do see that math scores declined slightly for most of our student groups. And this trend is similar. We see similar declines at the state level, and we see similar declines in reading performance at the state level. But I would say that the math trend is more concerning, because actually during school year eighteen, nineteen, this school year, our students are going to be assessed on revised state SOLs, which are actually more rigorous. So, we've really focused as a leadership team in working with schools on math strategies, math supports for our students, to ensure that our students can be successful on the new, more rigorous standards, which they're going to be assessed on this school year. Now, this metric, as you can see, is under development, and this metric is going to report the percent of English learners who become proficient in English within five years. And it's under development, because it's relying on data that is being developed by the Virginia Department of Education as one of their new progress monitoring measures. So, as soon as we receive the information from VDOE, we can complete this calculation and provide the board with the information. But even though we don't have data on this particular metric, I did want to share that we do have annual progress measures for our English learners under federal benchmarks. And as I mentioned at the beginning of the report, using that measure, ninety-six percent of our schools exceeded the federal targets for English language learner growth in seventeen, eighteen. So, we move to the next set of metrics, which are focused on college and career readiness. And key takeaways here that I would point out is that we have made progress in closing gaps for on-time graduation for seniors, with a plan for college and career after graduation as well. However, we did not make progress in closing gaps for the percent of students passing a college-level exam or earning an industry certification before graduation. So, here we see our on-time graduation performance, and you'll note that FCPS made progress overall in closing gaps for on-time graduation. In fact, our Asian student subgroup and our white student subgroup have already reached the performance target that was established for the nineteen-twenty school year. However, what stands out on this chart is our Hispanic student performance, graduation rates actually declined from seventy-seven to seventy-four percent during this reporting period. And we do see large gaps among some of our student groups. So, I would just, again, call your attention to this metric as being one of the most important metrics, I think, that we're going to look at this evening, because we all know how closely correlated high school graduation is with future economic success. So, this is an area, when we look at graduation rates, where we really need to focus our attention and our resources moving forward as a school system. This metric is reporting the percentage of students who have plans for college or career as reported on the senior survey. And overall here, you see that progress was made towards the performance target, with most of our student groups actually nearing the aspirational target of a hundred percent. So, the news is good, but again, I would like us to consider this particular metric, which expresses students' self-reported aspirations, in relation to the next metric we're going to look at, which reports students either passing a college-level exam, like the AP or the IB exam, or earning an industry credential. So, here you can see that there's still a lot of work for us to do if we're going to be able to ensure that all of our students are prepared to achieve their aspirational goals. So, while we saw just a minute ago that all of the students, almost all of our students report having plans for college or careers, less than forty percent of most of the student groups here actually are earning a passing score on a college-level exam or an industry certification, which would be key indicators that they are on track to reach their aspirational goals. So, we'll move now to another set of metrics related to access and digital access in particular. And the key takeaway here is that we did increase technology access for high school students during the reporting period through expansion of our e-Learning Backpack Program, and we are currently on track to provide one-to-one access for all high schools by the end of school year nineteen-twenty. And you can see the specific performance increases for student groups with respect to technology access here. And I would just point out that the twenty-seven point gain for economically disadvantaged students in digital access is perhaps the most important data point here, because this is really creating opportunities for students who didn't have them previously. Moving to the next set of metrics, which are related to closing gaps in advanced academics, the biggest takeaway here, I think, is that we did make progress toward increasing more equitable participation in our AAP Level Four programs, as you'll see in just a second. So, this metric is reporting So this metric is reporting the percent of students who participate in AAP Level 4 programs in grades three through eight. And again, you can see here that progress was achieved for this metric overall and among all student groups. For example, participation rates increased by 4% for Black students, and 2% for Hispanic, and 2% for economically disadvantaged student groups. Nevertheless, you do see that large gaps still do remain among our subgroups. So this continues to be an area of focus for us. Here you see that we also made progress in increasing the number of schools that offer local Level 4 instruction. And you'll note that 60 out of 112 of our non-center elementary schools, so any of our elementary schools that are not a Level 4 AAP center, there are 112 of those schools, 60 out of 112 schools now offer local Level 4 programs. And you see the growth from 52 to 60 during this reporting period. And this is another new metric that we're looking at as part of the revised strategic plan, which reports on the number of schools that offer the Young Scholars Program. And currently, 88 out of 141 of our elementary schools offer Young Scholars. So this is another opportunity gap that we can continue to focus on as a school system. Now, this metric is also under development, and it is going to report on the percent of classrooms where students receive instructional experiences using AAP curriculum. So this is a newly approved metric as of March 2019, when the board adopted the new plan, and we had not collected data on this previously. So this is a new metric, and we are in the process currently of collecting baseline information that can be shared with the board next year. And the final metric for advanced academics reports on the percent of AAP students who score at the pass-advanced level on either the reading or the math SOL. So in 1718, we did see some slight performance decreases here for most student groups, but this is also a new metric that we had not formally tracked as part of the strategic plan previously. The next set of metrics is related to advanced coursework, and key takeaways that I would point out include that gains were made in the participation rates in AP, IB, and honors courses. And additionally, we did see, or I should say, we continue to see, gaps in participation rates among students finishing Algebra I by the end of the eighth grade. And that is what is indicated on this slide. And here you can see that we did not make progress overall with respect to the percent of students participating in Algebra I by eighth grade, and you continue to see large student gaps across, or large gaps across the student groups on this particular metric. Here we see that the students who actually do participate in Algebra I by the end of eighth grade, they actually do quite well in the course. So while overall progress, our overall progress target was not met, most of our students are achieving at high rates if they actually participate in the course. So the real challenge here for us, or the first challenge, I should say, for us is to ensure that we can get the student participation, and then to continue to provide the supports for them to be successful once they're enrolled in the course. This metric reports the percent of students who participate in honors courses in grades seven through 12. And you see that FCPS made overall progress on this access metric, but we do see gaps across the student groups here as well. This metric reports, similar to the Algebra metric, that the students who actually participate in honors courses, again, continue to pass those courses at very high rates. The next metric reports on students that are participating in AP or IB courses by the end of high school. And this metric is reporting on the percent of those students that are passing those courses and demonstrating proficiency in AP or IB courses by the end of high school. So again, the trend is similar across all these metrics. For the students who participate, the performance in terms of course passage is quite high. So this is perhaps a more important and more detailed metric with respect to advanced coursework, and you can see that it's marked as under development. And the data for this particular metric actually just became available today. So we haven't had time to complete all of the analysis, but what we do have is the baseline performance and the current year performance with respect to the percent of students who are earning a passing score on one or more AP or IB courses. So again, we can talk about this in more detail on Monday as well during the work session, but this is perhaps a better indicator in terms of student performance in those particular advanced courses. So as you saw with the premier workforce report, the annual strategic plan reports now include a section that calculates the return on investment, or the ROI, for the specific actions related to the desired outcomes in the plan. So this slide summarizes the areas where the ROI was calculated for division actions related to closing gaps. So you see the areas in project momentum, literacy initiatives, FCPS ON, and efforts to address equity gaps in advanced programs. So you'll note that we've provided on this slide the amount of money that was invested on each of the associated activities for these items during 1718, as well as the impact of those activities on the associated performance metrics. So for example, you'll note that $693,000 was spent on literacy professional development efforts, which contributed to gains in the percentage of grade-three students reading on or above grade level by the end of third grade. So there's a lot of information here. There's a lot more detailed information on ROI and the full narrative report, and this is perhaps an area that we might want to dig into more during the work session on Monday as well. I'd also like to just briefly highlight some of the work in progress. So we just looked at a large set of metrics, and we saw some of those pressing gaps with respect to opportunity, access, and attainment. And a lot of work is currently underway to address those gaps. For example, here you see information on our efforts to support reading and math performance, which include implementation of new curriculum materials and resources, new programs for supporting English language learners, expansion of our project momentum supports to additional schools. In the area of college and career readiness, we're focusing on supporting students with the academic and career planning process. We've increased work-based learning experiences for students. And as you know, we've been in the process of expanding the AVID program. As Dr. Braybrand just detailed, that's one of the things that's included in the FY20 budget. And then with respect to advanced academics and advanced coursework, we're currently working to expand local Level 4 programs and Young Scholars programs. We've increased professional development and provided additional professional development for over 1,000 teachers in using the AAP curriculum resources within the general education classrooms this year. And while it's not listed on this slide, we're also in the process of initiating an external study to look at the equity issues with respect to advanced academic access. And we've also additionally increased human resource capacity to support our equity efforts, including a CAG program manager, Closing the Achievement Gap program manager, a multicultural study specialist, an ombudsman, region equity specialist, and school equity leads as well. I also would just draw your attention to the box on the top right-hand side of this chart, which really talks about a big focus of our work for next year, which is going to be around training and development for schools in monitoring school-based goals related to closing gaps. So we have specifically revised our school improvement plan process this year to align the school improvement plans to the division metrics that we're looking at here tonight. And a big focus of the work of the leadership team is going to be supporting schools with implementing strategies to help them make progress towards achieving those performance targets. So we can talk a lot about, a lot more about this work on Monday as well. So we're going to transition now out of the desired outcome on closing gaps to the next desired outcome in the plan, which focuses on providing all FCPS future families with access to high-quality learning experiences. And with respect to this outcome, it's important to note that there is a board-approved metric that's still under development, but we have some substitute data that we can provide as well. And like we've seen in past reports, we've provided information on early literacy skill assessments for our incoming kindergarten students. And I'm going to share information, updated information, on participation rates across the county with respect to enrollment and pre-K programs. So this is the metric that I mentioned that's still under development with respect to kindergarten readiness, and it's going to focus on executive functioning skills. And it relies on a state assessment, which is going to be given for the first time in the 1920 school year. So we don't have data on this yet, but when it becomes available, I think it's going to be quite exciting, because it's going to provide us with additional information on school readiness, like executive functioning skills and social-emotional development. So we don't have that data, which is the board-approved metric, but we do have data that we've provided in previous strategic plan reports as an indicator of kindergarten readiness, which specifically are early literacy skills of our students. So this chart provides information on the pass rates on the I-ready assessment, which we've been giving for two years now. And you can see that overall, 66% of our students are on track, basically, when they enter kindergarten. So that means that a third of our students that are coming to us when they enter kindergarten are coming with gaps in early literacy skills. And it's, I think, more than anything, that is a function of the lack of access to preschool that many of our students have. So when you look at the next chart, we've provided updated information on the percent of students in each of the high school pyramids who did not participate in preschool before enrolling in kindergarten. So for example, you can see the Lee Pyramid, at 38%, has the highest percentage of students entering kindergarten without preschool. And I would submit that this is another one of the most pressing metrics that we need to look at, and one of the most important challenges in terms of access gaps for us to address, because when students, as you know, enter school already below benchmark and gaps already exist, it becomes incredibly difficult to close those gaps over time. So I wanted to share just a little bit of the work that's in progress with respect to our work in early childhood education. In the summer of 2017, understanding that we have a lot of students coming to us that lack formal pre-K experiences, we expanded the implementation of the Bridge to K program in 25 schools. And this is a program that focuses on school routines, literacy and numeracy skills, and has a strong focus on family engagement and support as well. And we had over 1,100 students participate in the Bridge to K program, and we saw very significant gains with respect to self-regulation and academic skills for the students that participated. We've also been working very hard with our community-based early childhood providers to provide them with support, professional development, and resources to make sure that the experiences that students might be getting in community-based programs is as close as possible to the quality of experiences that they would get if they participated in programs within the county. And we've also been partnering and collaborating with the County Office of Early Childhood to focus on implementing the Equitable School Readiness Plan, which focuses on ensuring that we really collaborate and streamline and build a cohesive system of supports from both the Office of Early Childhood Programming and Fairfax County Programming. And as I said, as we look ahead to next year, we're going to be implementing the new state required measures as part of the Virginia Kindergarten Readiness Program that will give us information on social-emotional learning and self-regulation for students. So we're going to turn now to the last of the three desired outcomes, which is a focus on ensuring that all of our students develop Portrait of a Graduate attributes. And a few things to note here, we are still working and developing the one-board-approved metric that we have for measuring Portrait of a Graduate skills, which is our Capstone Presentations of Learning. But we do have 16 schools that are currently participating in a pilot with this metric, and they're partnering with instructional services staffed to really help us understand what it will take to implement and scale that work over time. So while this particular metric is still under development, we've been working on Portrait of a Graduate now for five years, and we've accomplished, I think, a lot as a system, as you can see from this slide. Over 6,000 teachers have been trained in project-based learning, and every school has at least one teacher who's been trained. 77 of our schools have explicit Portrait of a Graduate goals written into their school improvement plans. And over 150 teachers have partnered with instructional services to support scaling a Portrait of a Graduate in their schools. In this spring, over 77 schools actually were represented in exhibitions of learning that highlighted their accomplishments and shared their work with other schools that are engaged in this work around project-based learning and Portrait of a Graduate. So this slide just demonstrates what this work looks like and the various different approaches that some of our schools are taking as they are working on their journey towards Portrait of a Graduate. So you can see things here, like initiatives like Get to Green. We had a speaker this evening that was talking about environmental stewardship. We have a very strong Get to Green program, STEAM program, our Global Classroom program, which connects students around the world to learn together about each other's cultures. All of these initiatives and programs support students' development of Portrait of a Graduate skills. And again, we will be measuring those more formally through the Capstone Presentations of Learning in the coming years. So we're wrapping up here, and in summary, I just wanted to point out a few of the most important points, I think, that I would want to call your attention to with respect to our current performance results. And you can see here, for example, on metrics associated with closing the gaps, that we've continued to see gaps with respect to standardized testing, but we did make progress in preparing all of our students to read on grade level by the third grade. We've made progress in preparing most student groups to graduate on time and develop post-secondary plans. And we've made progress addressing opportunity gaps in AAP through expansion of local Level 4, but we know that we've got a lot more work to do, and we need to expand our Young Scholars Program and continue to make sure that all students have exposure to AAP curriculum and the general education program. And we still need to do much more work to make sure that we've got opportunity for all of our students to participate, as well as access for all of our students to participate in advanced math. And then in the area of early childhood, we've seen that some very persistent gaps in terms of access to pre-K enrollment across the county, but those have been mitigated to some degree with our Bridge to K program. And then finally, with respect to Portrait of Graduate, we've seen the integration of Portrait of a Graduate into more classroom instruction and more of a school-wide focus on those efforts during the 1718 school year. So I just wanted to wrap up by providing some considerations for the board to think about, and you see things here with respect to funding and with respect to action that we believe could make a difference in helping us reach our performance targets. So a few of the things you'll actually notice here, and I won't go through all of these in detail, but a few of the things you'll notice actually have checkmarks by them, and those are things that basically are already underway. So expansion of high school academy programs is something that we're working on with the board. It's included in the FY20 budget. I mentioned earlier, the external study of our advanced academic programs was recently approved by the board, and that RFP is in process, as well as new language arts curriculum materials that were adopted by the board this year. And then we need to continue our advocacy to the Virginia Department of Education and Legislature on flexibility for our English learners related to performance on our standards of accreditation indicators. And I think the removal of the VGLA and the impact that it had on English learners is a great example of why we need to continue those efforts. So there is one thing that's not listed here that I would just like to mention in closing, though, and that is the One Fairfax policy. We've looked at 20 different metrics related to closing gaps, and we've seen some successes, and we've seen a lot of challenges. And I would submit to the board that while what we do in our classrooms every day is incredibly important, it will not be enough to eliminate these gaps on its own. We have staff in our schools working very, very hard, giving their best every single day, and we have too many of our families that continue to come to school and bring issues into the school where they face economic and social issues, and those things come into our schools on a daily basis. And until, as a county, we're able to ensure that all of our students can come to school ready to learn every day without concerns about hunger, or housing, or healthcare, I don't believe that we're actually going to be able to close all of these gaps. So I would say one of the things that we need to focus on more as a community is looking at the One Fairfax policy and talking about what that would look like in practice and what that would look like in reality, because it is going to take a community effort to accomplish the performance aspirations that we've set as a school system. So again, there's an awful lot of information- So again, there's an awful lot of information here, I know that. We'll have a lot of time, well, we'll have several hours at least on Monday during the work session to dig into this in more detail. But I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have at this time as well.
Thank you, Dr. Presidio, and I especially appreciate your non-scripted comment at the end. I do have a number of people on deck to speak, starting with Ms. Darinak Kovacs.
Thank you, Dr. Presidio. What you've done here today is you've shown where we've made progress and where we need to grow. Again, your comment at the end says it all. I have seen many years some of the things, like we're talking about Bridge to K. Probably ten years ago, I sat on the Childcare Advisory Council, and when we started initiating this, it's a very simple program. It's something that we can continue to do. But again, and when you see that that chart on page thirty-six and how impactful that is, and you know, some of the advocacy efforts out there, why people don't appreciate one high school over another, and you can see the direct impact of this correlation between those simple things that... preschool, and Ms. Hines and I, we ran on that platform nine years ago, and we're still not where we need to be. And I think it's extremely important that you said it's a county-school partnership. Schools cannot do this alone. And I think you see the behemoth efforts that we're having and what we're doing. But it's kind of like a finger in the dike in some ways because of the needs that are coming into our system and what we need in wraparound services and beyond. But I do have a couple of questions. Refresh my memory about VGLA and why that was removed, and what are we working toward right now? And I know I knew this, but I just can't remember it right now. Like the state, the Virginia Board of Education, removed it. Why and when and what are they doing to...
So the state removed the VGLA in school year seventeen, eighteen. So that's the data that we're looking at in this report. And as I mentioned, in school year sixteen, seventeen, we actually, in Fairfax, had over twenty-one hundred students who accessed the VGLA as a substitute test for the SOL. And when that was taken away, you can see the gap in terms of how that depressed the pass rates in the reading SOL for English learners. But also, as I said, for Hispanic students and economically disadvantaged students because there are a lot of English learners in those particular student subgroups as well.
Okay, so we're just using the SOL now?
Right.
And but wasn't there talk of, because I guess this was the baseline year or whatever, was there talk of showing, of using the SOL, but if it showed growth even if you didn't pass it? Where is that talk? And I'm trying to remember conversations, you know, with the former Secretary of Education and what she talked about and when she was here visiting some of my schools. And we talked about the need to show growth even if you didn't pass. How is that working?
So that's a really good question. And the data that we're looking at here is unadjusted pass rates.
Okay.
So there are some adjustments, and there are still some substitute tests that students can take in certain situations. Work Keys is one of those tests that students can take at the high school. Work Keys is another substitute test at the high school that students can take. There are a number of other substitute tests, APEIB tests that could substitute as well. So what we're looking at here are the unadjusted pass rates. When we look at standards of accreditation, that's when the state applies some of those other adjustments. So there is consideration for accreditation purposes with respect to performance. But the problem, I think, is not just one of accreditation, it's one of how the students actually perceive their own success.
Right.
Right? So we had previously, looking at these unadjusted pass rates, a number of students who were passing through demonstration of their performance through work-based learning samples, performance-based assessments. With more time and a little bit of additional work, were able to demonstrate that they had mastered state standards in a very authentic assessment setting. You take that opportunity away for them, and they're left with a standardized multiple-choice test in a language that they're not yet proficient in. And that sends a signal to them that maybe is discouraging to them and maybe doesn't continue to, you know, keep them engaged and keep them working hard.
Exactly, and I hear that from some of my counselors and some of the schools that have challenges with their graduation rates. I hear that all the time from them. Okay, thank you. And these may be questions for Monday, but I just want to give them to you now. On the slide fourteen, that we're on track for the one-to-one devices by the end of this year, and you had a totality in the budget. I'm trying to remember, if you can break that down, how many years we have invested and how much we've invested over the years?
In FCPS on?
Yes.
I'd have to do that for you on Monday. I'd be happy to do that. I don't have the specific dollar figures here. The ROI information was with respect to what was spent in seventeen, eighteen to ensure that all of the e-learning backpack schools, all of the students in those schools had devices. So that expenditure was like five hundred and seventy thousand dollars to be able to continue to do that because the backpack grant did not provide devices for all of our students in all grade levels in all of those backpack schools.
All right, so we could have that on Monday. And then I guess another question, and again, this goes to Bridge to K, which I mentioned a minute ago. And you might not even be able to have this for Monday. But one thing, because of, I think, the simplicity of the program, is what I would like to eventually know is what would the cost be to expand this Bridge to K program, particularly in those high school pyramids, so that every elementary school in these pyramids, say with, I don't know, I'm looking at it, twenty percent or more where the kids, you know, are not, do not come to school ready to learn in those pyramids, what would that cost be? So I'd like that cost allocated at some point. And I realize Monday, that may not happen. But I think that's something that, because you've shown that how impactful that program is, and so if we can expand that in some ways. And that may be something where we talk about not being able to do it alone and talk about that as a county initiative and extra funding to be allocated to that. And I think that's it right now.
All right, thank you very much.
Ms. Schultz?
Yeah, we're going to have a work session on it, but there are certain things that I'm hoping that we can discuss. Can you go to slide eleven, please? In the past, oh, it's probably, well, this is okay, this will work. In the past, we've had a presentation, and I don't know if it's included for the Monday work session, but I didn't see it. We had a slide on the number of students who graduate, who go on to a four-year college or university. And if I recall, that number's about, I don't know, sixty-five, sixty-eight percent. Does that sound about right?
That's right, yeah.
And then there's the additional, which is the number who finish, which is a little bit of a shocking number. It's not anywhere near what we would think.
Right.
I think it's like sixty-five percent in six years. Is that about right?
I think it's about right. I need to verify that to be sure.
So if that isn't planned to be included, I'm like pre-launching my next step request. You know, I think this report is the time to include that. If that hasn't been regularly, I mean, because it's sort of like an adjunct slide to this slide is kind of my point, is what's next? Because if we're preparing them for college and then career, work readiness, and then kind of life skills, the question is, what's happening to students that they're not able to finish college? Is it financial? Is it grit? Is it, you know, what is it? I don't think thirty-five percent or whatever that number is, not finishing in six years, that's not all financial. So what is it? And can we make better choices? I mean, I think I'm at five years requesting a university roundtable with colleges and universities to have discussions about the kind of life cycle of we're graduating students to go to college and what they're looking for in our graduates, and frankly, they're graduating students who come back and work here. What is it that we would like to see, not only in education graduates, but otherwise? And so that's kind of a life cycle of education. And if we're creating lifelong learners, I'm still requesting that. And then specifically here, you highlighted the Hispanic graduation rate reduced. And my question is, and I know we have a lot of much better disaggregation than we've had in the past in this report, and it's, we're going to take a little while to go through all of it. But one of my questions is, do we have a way to present or track, and I make up a term, I don't know if it's the right term, but non-traditionally aged-to-grade students?
We do.
So, and what, how that may be reflected in these statistics? Because if you have a student who is, you know, twenty-one, and they're still in our school system, and yes, we educate students till their twenty-third birthday, if they're not graduating, that's a different story than a student who has been with us, you know, K through or six through or whatever, twelve, and isn't graduating on time. So the question is, who isn't graduating on time? Are they our students who have been with us throughout their educational career? Are they new arrival students? Are they, you know, are they interrupted schooling students? I mean, I think that it's, I mean, it may be hard, but I'm sort of asking that, especially for difficult statistics where you were indicating, look, there are some things that we're just not going to be able to do. I mean, we cannot solve all the problems for, you know, every student that crosses a transom. But I think it's fair for us to identify, look, we're not hitting the mark in some of these areas. Would that be possible?
I can actually tell you a little bit of information on that now, and we can talk in more detail on Monday as well. So in respect to your specific question, we had five hundred and one of the one thousand thirty-one dropouts in the class of twenty eighteen came to us at age sixteen to twenty-two at the time of entry.
Just, can you just repeat that? Because I think that's a very interesting...
Yeah, so I mean, I've got a lot of additional statistics on each of these subgroups here. But five hundred and one of the one thousand thirty-one, so about fifty percent of the students that were dropouts in the class of twenty eighteen were students, when they came to us in Fairfax and enrolled, were somewhere between the age of sixteen to twenty-two. Because that's how we've set that parameter in terms of, you know, the older-aged students that are enrolling in Fairfax County. So that's one of the statistics. The other thing that we looked at when we investigated the Hispanic dropout rate was the number of Level One and Level Two students, right? So the English learners that are Level One and Level Two. And when you look at this chart, you'll see that we actually made progress for our English learners. But this particular chart includes former English learners in the English learner subgroup, student group. Most of the other metrics don't do that. Most of them are English learners. This particular graph is indicating also former English learners. And former English learners are graduating above the division average. So their graduation rates are higher than the division average. So that's inflating the English learner group. But in the Hispanic group, most of the students that were dropouts were Level One and Level Two English learners.
Okay, so yes, that's the kind of information that sort of, that makes it, that takes it from two-D to three-D, and that becomes very important. If we say that fifty, basically fifty percent of our high school dropouts were age sixteen and above when they came to us, you know, sixteen to twenty-two, you know, and we don't have a graduation waiver for on-time graduation. So we're supposed to graduate somebody within four years who, you know, has no English, you know, maybe not be literate or numerate in their own language, may have interrupted schooling, may have trauma, I mean, you know, all kinds of things. And so that's a very, that's a, this is the kind of statistic, this is data in context that I've been trying to get, so I'm, kudos on that. I will say, I am disappointed. I think that about seven years ago, I saw a bar, like the little silver dots that are at the gray dots that are at the top of this, when a former superintendent was here, and I got pretty hot. I'm going to be a little less hot now because I let off the steam on the side, on a sidebar with Dr. Brabran. I just don't like seeing targets that are different for children based on the color of their skin. I just, I just don't like it. I think it is, I'm like, look, let's drive to the same goal for all children regardless and, you know, track the achievement, but not have different goals. I just, that deeply, deeply troubles me. So I'll leave that. I'm sure some other people will have some comments on that. I do have a question on slide nineteen. Do we, do you track the progress, the student progress of students in local Level fours versus not local Level fours?
Yeah, we do.
Okay, so we can talk about that on Monday? Okay, and then...
So these are really good heads up if there are particular data sets that you would want to talk about on Monday. You don't have to tell me now, and I can't even guarantee that I would have all of them, of course, by Monday. But definitely an email would be helpful because that is information that we definitely do track. We do have that available. And just one other thing, if I could, I apologize. I probably should have done a better job kind of explaining that we're only in this report reporting on those twenty-two board-approved metrics. So some of the metrics that we had in previous strategic plans are not included here, so I didn't include that information. It doesn't mean that we're not tracking it anymore, that we couldn't get it or provide it to the board. We just didn't provide it in this particular report.
Right, and that's what I sort of, you know, sometimes I ask, well, often I ask questions I know the answer to, but I'm just articulating it for the public. I do think it's good to have that dimensional discussion about what student performance looks like, especially because we keep expanding local Level Four. And sometimes a little bit of the question is, why is that making a difference? And are we looking at the achievement? So I do think we ought to have that discussion. I have just two other quick ones. Slide twenty-five. So this, so this is participate, but you said pass, but it doesn't say pass. It says participate. You do mean pass, right?
So I might have misspoken on that. This is the percent of students who participate in honors courses. The next slide, if we go to the next slide, whoops, is the percent of students who pass one or more honors courses.
Okay, so I, if we want to, because we add things to our plate, if we want to take things off our plate, the number of kids who take a class, who cares? Honestly, I think it's a useless statistic, you know, that you take it, so what? Do you pass it? You know, it's the, you know, take a reservation versus hold a reservation issue. I just hope we're not taking time to gather stuff that doesn't really provide meaning. And the last question I have is on slide thirty-five. This is actually a pretty significant slide. How is the I-Ready going? I'm very happy to hear that we're going to be doing executive function testing. I mean, that was, you know, a baby that I hatched with the ACSD, and they took two years of committee time and really dug into that. And the whole reason that I wrote that as a charter endeavor for them for two years, first it was one, and then it moved to two, was because executive function doesn't just help students with disabilities. If we got it right and helped students with disabilities, that really flows over because all students would benefit by increased executive function. But the question is, has the I-Ready started to identify those students who need services? Because this was the tool that we put in to identify language-based issues and dyslexia. Is this helping? Because in the beginning, I heard a lot of sort of bumps, you know, by, from the staff. And then down at the bottom, it talks about the WIDA access... And then down at the bottom, it talks about the WEDA access placement test. I didn't realize that they do WEDA. Is that kindergarten level? And isn't that another, I don't know why that's here. I was confused because I thought one of the other big barriers that I didn't hear you talk about was the high-level bar of the WEDA exam where we have students passing SOLs but not able to clear the bar on WEDA. And why is it that, you know, so they stay in ELL or ESOL classes because they don't pass the WEDA, but they've passed their SOL? So just those, the two things, kind of like on the iReady executive function and then on the, where we are on the WEDA.
So I would say, kind of working backwards, the WEDA here is just referring to the data definition. So there's not WEDA access placement testing information included in this chart. The definition is just saying that the Ls here include all of the students who are eligible for kindergarten services based on WEDA testing, right? So WEDA testing, the WEDA access placement testing tells us what level of English language learner you are. And we use that to determine whether or not you're considered within the English language learner category.
But you're doing that in kindergarten?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So that's just part of the data definition. Your question about iReady, again, you had several really good components to that question. The first is just a reminder for everybody that 1718 was the first full year of iReady testing. We piloted it the previous year in a pretty large subset of schools. So essentially, we had two years of information that we were looking at. The data here is just for 1718. The main reasons that we implemented the iReady test first was to make sure that we were, had a screener in place as recommended by evidence-based best practice to ensure that we're looking multiple times a year to ensure that students are on track, particularly in literacy and math. And in literacy, we knew that we had some concerns identifying students that might be demonstrating markers for dyslexia and not identifying those students soon enough. So those were the main reasons that we adopted iReady. And for those purposes, it's actually working very well. We've been able to identify students that our data, using the other data indicators that we would have relied on prior to iReady, would have missed students, right? So it's helping us make sure that we're really screening more effectively for risk. So in that respect, it's been good. But definitely, it's a new assessment. It's very time-consuming for students to complete the assessment. So we definitely do get feedback from principals and teachers that we wish that this assessment could be administered more quickly and more efficiently. So we continue to work with the vendor to see if that's something that we can do. So I would say, for the testing purposes, it's working well. But for the implementation purposes, there's still some challenges that we need to address.
Super, I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz.
Hold on, the last comment I have is, I would just separate the economic disadvantage ELL and students with disabilities. I would put some kind of separator because that's a subset, they're subsets of each other, so those are not whole groups.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz, and now we're gonna go on to Ms. Hines.
Thank you. And unfortunately, because my fifth graders will be taking an SOL test on Monday, I may not make it to this part of the work session. So I have a few questions, I'll try to be quick. On AAP and equity, you know, I'm glad to see the new metric that's under construction. That's great. I was very happy to see that in there. One of the questions that I had on that, the only question I'll ask tonight, is the external study. I heard you say that the RFP is out. And I, so I'm wondering, has the school board seen the RFP and I missed it? Do we know what the scope of the study will be yet?
So let me clarify that comment. The RFP is in process. We're working with the procurement office. I don't believe that it's yet been released. The board saw the scope of study. Remember, we had two work sessions where we discussed the scope of study. And then it was reviewed in chairs and it was circulated in the, I believe in the Brabran briefing to all board members. And I'm happy to follow up with any board members that have any questions about specific components of the scope of the study.
Okay, thank you. I'll have to go back and read the Brabran briefing because I don't think I did that.
And I'm happy to send it to you directly as well.
Thank you, all right, thank you, I'm sorry. Slide 33, about pre-K. I'm so glad to see this really detailed look at pre-K because it is incredibly important, as we all know. I wonder if we are tagging kids in a way and taking a look at them longitudinally. So in other words, if we have programs that we have the kids in when they're, you know, before kindergarten, are we just measuring them at the kindergarten door to see if they're ready? Or are we somehow then following them through, you know, till third grade for reading readiness or, you know, grade level, that sort of thing? Are we able to do that?
Yeah, that's a great question. We actually are part of a longitudinal study with the University of Virginia. And we've talked about that with the board, but it's probably been like two years. So I'm sure nobody really remembers any of the details on that particular study. So that could be something that we could talk about in more detail. We'd be happy to do that in the work session on Monday. Or I'd be happy to follow up with you individually if you're not able to make the work session on Monday. But we've been working directly with them. And each year, we get information on the cohort of students that they started studying as they matriculate up to the next grade level.
That's great. Maybe I would just ask our chair, at some point, it'd be great to have a work session, a report on how that study's going, you know? So we don't have to spend a lot of time on Monday on it.
Yeah, and.
We're on the same path. I have a question similar.
We'd be happy to do that. The dean is actually the lead investigator on that particular study. And he definitely would, I mean, he came up once to speak with the board. I'm sure he'd be happy to do so again.
Okay, great, because, I mean, just a side note, I was at the Rest and Opportunity Neighborhood Meeting last night. And they're doing such good work supporting families of young children. And like anything else, that takes resources from the community. And people wanna see results, you know, they wanna see data so that they continue to make those investments in programs in it. So I think it would be great if we could somehow just put a tag on kids and see, you know, how they do down the road to see if we're working, you know? Thank you. So the other question I had on portrait of a graduate metric with the projects, I think that's great. I wonder, and maybe you've already answered this at another time, and I'm sorry if you have, but have we considered sampling, you know, results just to cut down on the workload? Because I imagine eventually after this pilot rolls out and we've got every fifth grader or every eighth grader doing a project, who is going to, you know, the way, the way we do SOL data, it's every kid, every year. So we're collecting all that data. Is there a way to sample the projects just to cut down on the workload?
So that is such a great question. Over the years of standardized testing, several times I've actually testified to state legislatures and suggested that perhaps we sample standardized testing results for the same reason. I've never been very persuasive or successful in that. And usually, the counterargument is, well, we need a score on every kid, right? Every parent wants a score on every kid. And I'm gonna use that same response now, is that for reporting purposes, I think we could do that. But we want to ensure that those experiences are happening for every student. And these presentations of learning are really more about the students reflecting on their own growth on the portrait of a graduate attributes and setting goals for next steps. So that's how we've kind of constructed the capstone portrait of a graduate. It's less about accountability and it's more about student reflection and growth.
That's great, and I completely agree with you. I don't think any kid should be left out of the project. It's more, I know that there's work between the classroom and your office, right? To sort of assemble everything. I mean, I've just done the, you know, Arlington has a performance assessment for writing in fifth grade. And that's a tremendous amount of work. We have to assess every single child to send results on, and I don't know that that's always necessary.
I agree.
Yeah, and then finally, the summary, I think it's slide 43. I just want to say hallelujah because since I've been on the board, we have all been talking about how measures and results based on SOL data are just not good enough for our kids. And what we see here, I think, is a result of those many conversations about how we want a balanced look. You know, we want a balanced assessment framework. We wanna look at kids from a lot of different angles. And I just feel like when I look at that, you know, it's complicated, but that's because it should be and we're there. So thank you so much for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Ms. Keys-Gamara, followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you, Dr. Sloan. I actually think there's really good information in here. I'm just gonna ask two questions, two, I'll focus, I won't call it two questions, an attorney should never say that, but two areas. And then we'll see where that goes. I will start with the ROI page. And we heard a question from one of our citizens tonight about how our strategic plan is specifically addressing the special education community or how we aren't. And I didn't notice when I looked at the ROI, that's not the page, I don't think, the ROI page, that there was anything specific to special education. So is there something coming down the pipe? Because I know the community is looking for that, but.
Well, I think it's a good question. So the ROI, a few things about the ROI calculations. First, there's really nothing specific to any subgroup in particular with respect to ROI. The ROI calculations are really looking at a particular metric level, not a particular subgroup. So it's really looking at the metric level. Additionally, the ROI calculations that were done this year, you have to remember that we're actually reporting on 1718 data using metrics from the board-adopted plan in March of 2019. So we didn't actually plan some of these activities with respect to some of these metrics. So some of the things that I think in the future can be reported on with respect to ROI, we really couldn't do. These were things that we had been focused on, that we were able to calculate the ROI on. And the Office of Research and Strategic Improvement worked really hard to try to get the information from us about what specific actions had we planned with respect to specific metrics in the plan that they could then evaluate. So there is a disconnect in this first year because the metrics don't necessarily match up to the actions because they occurred in two different points in time. So that's one thing. And then the other thing, again, is the ROI is really calculated at the metric level, not the student group level. And I do think those comments were very important to consider. And additionally, I would say, there's a lot of things that we're doing with respect to students with disabilities that wouldn't be in this report because this isn't a report talking about all of our work. This is a report talking about our performance metrics, our specific performance metrics. It doesn't mean that we can't include more information about the work.
Right, I think what the citizen was looking for was to make sure that those metrics were also applying to the, to that community.
Right.
The other one had to do, I think Ms. Hines talked a little bit about the slides about preschool and that, kind of a heat map you gave us of where the varying percentages of kids who are receiving preschool. For example, some areas as low as 4%, some areas as high as at 38%. And I think there's a direct connection between the achievement of even high schools and middle schools that carry through. And so can you give us an overall? I understand that FCPS may not be, have, be the only player in this game. But it seems to me that preschool is so critical. And we can see that throughout the different levels of FCPS. So can you give us, so the public understands how broad this problem is, what would need to happen for us to be able to address that 38%, those areas where we have such high numbers of students who are not able to attend preschool?
Yeah, I think that's a really important question. And I would say, I'll answer a few things briefly, and we might wanna bring that up during the work session on Monday because Maura Burke, the Director of Early Childhood Education, will be with us and she can talk more about the work that she's doing. But your question, I think, really is the focus of the county's, the Office for Children at the county level, the Equitable School Readiness Plan that they developed and that we've been partnering with them on, is to say that, you know, the county programs on their own aren't gonna be able to address this issue. Fairfax, public schools can't address this issue on their own. Community providers are not enough. We've gotta figure really a more joint and coordinated effort. And that's the whole point of that plan. And Maura could talk to you in more detail about some of the specific goals and actions that are in that plan. And that might even be a great topic to dig into even beyond the work session on Monday, maybe for a future work session.
It would also be great to have more detail with respect to where we have, and this map is great, but where the services are, who's getting them and that sort of thing. And where we also have the Bridge to K. I don't, I don't know where it is. It seems to be a great program where kids aren't getting preschool. But where is it, to what extent, how many students are we serving?
So, yeah, so we can, we can go into that in more detail as well. So for right now, though, I could say we had 25 schools, about 1,100 students in Bridge to K. We worked really hard to locate those programs where we have the largest percentages of students coming to us without preschool experience. So that was the general way that we organized that program. And again, it's a three-week program, but we've seen really good gains within that three-week period of time, particularly as we focus on that family engagement component. Because those are things that carry over after the students enroll in kindergarten. We've already built that relationship with the family so we can continue to partner with them on supports.
I will say this, and then I have one more comment. I heard the county executive say publicly that he felt that there was a definite will on the part of the county to make sure we bring forth preschool for all of our students. I'm going to remind him of that. But I also think that FCPS, we can alert our community as to what is necessary to make this happen. And that's part of the reason I asked the question today rather than Monday.
No, that's great. I appreciate it.
The last thing I want to say is, I do agree with my colleague. I did not feel comfortable, as you may realize, with some of these metrics we had with respect to closing the achievement gap. There is something inherently distasteful about having different standards for different groups of people. And so I just think that we may want to put our thinking caps on as to how to address that. I understand the thinking behind it to say, well, the gap is so big and we can't possibly close it all at one time. But I also never want to send a message to the community that we expect less.
You know, I think that's a really important point and we can talk about that more as well. It makes me realize I forgot to mention one of the key elements of those data charts, though, are the aspirational targets that the board set with respect to each of those metrics. And those aspirational targets are equitable and consistent across all student groups. So I apologize for not mentioning that sooner, but nevertheless, that might be a good future conversation.
Right, I don't think that makes any difference. I believe that we are in the midst of trying to address some of the cultural perspectives. And those types of differentiations don't assist us in doing that.
Sure. If I could, just to share, because I know it's been brought up, and I do wanna say, we spent a lot of time, we spent a lot of time as a leadership team talking about this and sharing this with the board, and we're open for continued conversation. We clearly wanted to say aspirational 100% across. One of the things, and we can continue to work with you, this plan can evolve. We wanna hold ourselves accountable, so we developed baseline data, which was three-year past data to say where we are. And how do we hold ourselves for making progress? So we could, we could talk about not, we could talk about taking out that mid-target, but we wanna be able to communicate whether we're making progress or not. We weren't really, and I'm just saying, we weren't even giving ourselves targets to say, I mean, part of the equity lens, we gotta say to ourselves, we need to try to push as much as we can, give clarity to the community, even for resource discussions, for you all as a board, for policy discussions with the board of supervisors, but also to our own personnel, really, what are the markers? Oh my gosh, it is crystal clear through these data charts where we're doing well and where we really have room to go. And we're aligning our school improvement plan with the same stuff that you're seeing now, our school teams are seeing. So I think that's a move, but we're not attempting. And we want to, and we will listen to this board about making sure that we're not trying to send a message that we want lower standards for certain groups of kids. So I appreciate both of your board members' comments and unifying around that. And we can figure out ways to make those appropriate adjustments.
Ms. McLaughlin?
So I wanted to just point out some things to my colleagues. Tammy, Sandy Evans and I are the meeting managers. And so we really do want to encourage you to read the report that accompanies this PowerPoint. And also, one of the things we talked about. And also, one of the things we talked about with Sloan is really look at the metrics. Because we need to be bringing to Dr. Brabran and the leadership team which metrics are meaningful and which ones maybe we want to change and adjust. And I'm going to give you an example. There are three metrics in here that have to do with algebra, passing algebra by the eighth grade and SOL. There is the baseline of plans for college and career. And then there was the one on passing one or more honors courses. Do you know what the baseline metrics are? They're all somewhere between 90 and 99%. And what I said to Sloan is, I don't find those to be some of the more strategic-focused metrics because some of them, we're literally at 92 to 98% already. At, at passing an honors course, one or more, we're at 97 to 100 across every one. So to me, that's a really good, feel-good thing. But if this is supposed to be a strategic goal report, then what I'm kind of sharing with Dr. Brabran as well is, this board should say, thank you, that's good. So now we're going to task you with all, you know, we have the objectives at the very high level, but we're needing to get more robust metrics so that we're looking at a more strategic focus on, on closing these gaps. The other thing that we captured from the meeting manager I shared with Sloan is, right now, if Sloan, I recall, if there were two or more areas where progress wasn't made in the subgroups, then it was an absolute, no progress was made. But we wouldn't even do that to children. So why should we do that to staff or to the division? We can say limited progress, moderate progress, but I didn't like the all or nothing. I mean, that's, to me, it, it doesn't tell the accurate story there. So I think that's something to look at for a future report. And then the other thing that surprised me was, we present in the report that there's only one defined metric for early education. And yet, as you peel away, even just looking at the slide presentation, we do have, as many of my colleagues are noting in this slide in front of us, you know, the percent of students entering kindergarten without preschool. I mean, that's actually a metric, and that's a very meaningful metric, Dr. Brabran. I mean, that's, to me, turn that into a metric, and that's for the public to appreciate, we have a metric. However, I would say to my colleagues, I hope you'll consider this for Monday, when we suggest metrics to the team. The number of classrooms in pre-K that we have added, that's a metric. The number of kids who are on the waitlist, who've moved off, that's a metric. But we don't have this in this report. So that, to me, is easy data, but it's a way that we help ourselves as a division and communicate to the board supervisors and the public where we're going with that. And then I'll just make one more note, because I was trying to be mindful of time as well. The, the idea that we've got every subgroup in a singular subgroup bucket, but many of our children actually cross over multiple buckets. And we know that, that there, when we tie on English with second language and with poverty, and then, you know, some of the other gaps that are there, you can end up seeing that how you approach some of the solutions to close gaps, you've got to make sure you've got the right supports in place. Education level of a parent and poverty are two of the greatest determinants of how a student is going to find success. And when we do some of those cross, crossovers, then I think it also gets to what my colleague Ms. Kees-Gamar has also said. What happens when there just ends up being the concern that, take all those other mitigating factors out and you still have gaps? Then are there, you know, is there the cultural component that, that we've got to target? But I think providing that kind of more, and Ms. Schultz said it, that kind of three-dimensional context to our students, that, I think, will also help people to appreciate that we might very well have plenty of students in different subgroups being highly successful because they actually aren't dealing with poverty. Their parents do have graduate degrees and supports, and they're doing great, but the subgroup, you know, labels the subgroup differently. So that's, and then finally, I think, Dr. Brabran, to what you said, I would absolutely get rid of the target. I think the goal is to see movement to close gaps. So aspirational is, we want everybody to hit the target. And then each year, you're just reporting on where the progress was. But I don't think you need to have a defined, it's going to, because that's just, a lot of times it feels a little bit arbitrary, like we're going to move it by 3% based on what? So that would be something to consider.
If I, if I could just provide one response. You made the point about students that might be represented in multiple demographic categories. And I did want to just call everybody's attention to the fact that we've provided some of that information in the report, in the data appendix. So you'll see, for example, like on page 50 of the data appendix to the report, economically disadvantaged students that might also be English learners, economically disadvantaged students that might also be students with disabilities. So we've done that on some of the key indicators. We haven't done that on all of the indicators because it's not part of the metrics that are in the strategic plan. And it does take a lot of time to pull that information that way. But we had a similar conversation last year about this. And so I wanted to provide the board with some of the additional data analysis that you'd requested last year as well.
Thank you. I'm just going to put my marker down to everybody. I think that's a way to enhance the report for next year. And, because I want to see it front and center, not buried in an appendix. Thank you, Sloan, very much.
Ms. Strauss, followed by Ms. Evans.
Thank you, and thank you very much for the report. And for your presentation, it really helps to explain going through all of the charts. So I really do appreciate that. And I know that as we are looking at each one of the metrics, we are looking at a point in time based on, on student output. And it would be interesting, I remember many, many years ago, we were able to take a look at individual student progress over time. And I know that that can be hard to do because you have to have the students who are with you over time. But it would show that when children are with us from the beginning, the gaps narrow over time. And I don't know if that's something that we can do because mobility has huge impact on that. But one would hope that as our children are with us and they are in a stable school environment, there may be other challenges in their lives, but if they're in a stable school environment, that many of the challenges would be overcome and many of the gaps would be closed. I don't know if that's ever something that we can actually take a look at with some of these reports.
Well, we could certainly have that as a next step to investigate. I'd have to collaborate with folks in the Information Technology Department, as well as some other departments, to be able to investigate how much time and effort it would take to do that.
I know, I know.
But I think it's a really important point, so we'd be happy to take a look at it.
Because when you can do that, it shows the, because children, children grow over time. And, and we hope that the efforts of our teachers and the resources that we're putting in build on themselves every year. So that you would hope that, and I, the, the one metric that we do see, which certainly does show dramatic progress, is our ESOL students. Once they have gone particularly to level, I suppose, five, six, seven, eight, when they, when they are truly bilingual, they academically are graduating at a higher level and actually doing better than everybody else. And, which I suppose on the one part does show, people who are bilingual probably have additional talents once you get to that point, whether or not it's cognitive flexibility or just the, the discipline of, of getting to that point in life, because they do do better.
Yeah, it's interesting. When we look at our former English learner performance in most of these metrics, they outperform the division averages consistently, whether it's reading SOLs, math SOLs, graduation rates, so.
They do. And that shows the persistence and the investment over time and the hard work of the children.
That's right.
And that is the one, I think, that does, that does show that. And I, I will look forward to the appendix where it shows some of the other situations where children have several different areas of challenge. But I would presume, again, that the poverty tends to be, and that has been, poverty tends to be the, the consistent predictor of challenge. I shouldn't say lack of success, but of challenge across. And I know years ago, we were able to look at that across all subgroups of kids, but different time, different place, and different kinds of concerns. So at any rate, I also remember years ago, under, with different technology systems, we did code kids who were going through our Head Start, Head Start programs, our own Head Start programs. And we could see that the kids who had been through those programs were, again, making significant progress and doing better on the third-grade SOLs. Now, it didn't predict that there was unusual carryover all the way through if the only support they received was Head Start, obviously, there's more to that. But that was another metric that we did look at, and you could see the year-by-year progress paying off.
And we do have that data. The University of Virginia study that I mentioned is a little bit more holistic because it's not just looking at things like SOL performance or course performance. They're actually doing interviews, classroom observations. So it's a much more robust study that they're doing in terms of the impact of early childhood education and the lasting impact of those experiences.
Great. I was going to say, I do like the scatter, the, the heat map that shows the pre-kindergarten experience and part of our challenge. But I also know that we have, there is also a difference in families' comfort with sending children outside your extended family group for more formal instructional activity. And that is sometimes where some of the county services are important, at least, you know, suggesting activities. But that, that also is, is a change. And sometimes that doesn't necessarily have to do with, with income, but it is rather a traditional approach to how you care for your very young children.
That's right.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Ms. Evans?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Presidio, for an excellent report. Both the presentation and the narrative, it's very thorough, and I appreciate all the excellent data. I am not going to ask all my questions tonight, but I want to give you a bit of a heads up on, on some of the things and make a couple of comments. I think a couple of the, the major things that have been highlighted, and I'll continue to highlight, and it's perfect that this is, this map is up on the screen. Certainly, that tells a very important story, that, that map, about where we really need to, to put extra efforts with, by coordinating with the county and with private providers and, and our own work. So I'm, I'm glad you highlighted that. Clearly, there's an area that we really need to be focusing on, as well as our English language learners. So I'll follow up on some of the comments that have been made because I, I do think that, and I did go to that page. I appreciate the disaggregation, or maybe it's aggregation, maybe that's the word for it, looking at the combined totals for, for example, graduation rates. If I'm reading this properly on page 59, a student who is both Hispanic and an English language learner, the on-time graduation rate is 29%? Is that correct? I, I'm looking at the narrative and, and the appendix. If you don't have the answer now, that's, that's all right. We can talk about it on Monday. But one of the things that I was trying to get at here is because we do have so many newcomer students who aren't just English language learners, but who come to us with very little, if any, literacy in their own language, very little, if any, numeracy. And that has been an increasing number for us. So I do wonder if we turned this around and, and took a look. If you were, if you are a Hispanic student who is not an English language learner, what is your graduation rate? I don't think, I don't think it's here, but perhaps it's here, and I just haven't found it yet. But I, I just think that that might put that number into a little bit more perspective because so many of our new, well, you know, so many of our newcomers are, are, are both students with interrupted formal education and English language learners and economically disadvantaged. So that might give a, and the, the number that you gave us certainly is instructive, that nearly half of the students that don't graduate are Level 1 and Level 2. And I certainly think that needs to inform our continued advocacy at the state level in terms of graduation rates and how we assess how well we are doing or how well a school is doing. Certainly, having a student come to us at the age of 17 with no language and no literacy is a, is a high bar. I know that's a very, you know, high, high bar to, to get over. So I do think we need to continue our advocacy at the, at the state level on helping them understand what that looks like. And perhaps give a little bit more dispensation to us. I mean, I know they give us, it's six years, correct? Six years for somebody who's an English language learner, they have six years to graduate, is that correct? To be, to be counted as part of the, the on-time graduation cohort?
Well, the data that we're looking here is the four-year on-time graduation cohort. There is information in the appendix. I also ran the five and the six-year graduation data in the appendix and included that in the appendix. But what we looked on the slides was the four-year graduation, on-time graduation cohort.
But doesn't this, when we, we look at accreditation and, and on-time graduation, don't we get more time with the English language learners? That's, yes?
Yes, but again, this is not focused on standards of accreditation.
Correct, right. My, my point here being that, that if we're going to use some of this data for our state advocacy, that was, that was my point there. I, I would like to go a little bit more into the Capstone projects, which are, I think it's, it's marvelous that we're making progress there. I, I would be interested to know, to know at the high school level how that, or even, I guess, at the middle school level, how that coordinates with IB programs? Since that's very project-oriented, IB is also very project-oriented. Is that done in conjunction with IB, IB projects? Is that done, is it a whole separate thing? So I would be interested in knowing more about that. I do see on iReady, the, the new screener, the, the mixed results for how well it's doing. And I realize it's, it's, it's early. But I do think that's something we need to watch. That's an area, did we take off any assessments when we added the iReady assessment?
We, we did reduce the DRA assessment, the KMRA assessment. We reduced, in some instances, our internal horizon assessments. And we look at our assessment policy kind of holistically every year to review workload, associated workload issues as well. So we did take off some assessments. The issue with the iReady that I was mentioning is the amount of time that it takes for a particular student to complete the assessment is longer than we would, than we would hope.
Right. And I, and I think the, you know, if, if we're seeing what, what you refer to as mixed results, that's something for us to, to take in.
Well, I want to clarify that comment because what I was saying was with respect to, for, using the assessment for instructional purposes of identifying students that would be at risk with early literacy skill deficits, it's been successful. In terms of the implementation challenges around the amount of time that it takes for students to complete the assessment and the additional logistical concerns that many teachers and principals have raised, that's the mix. It's not a mixed result on the instructional student achievement side.
Oh, all right. Well, that's, that's an important distinction.
It's that the implementation of a new assessment comes with challenges.
I see. All right. And then there's just one other comment, and I, I know this might seem like a small point, but with the one-to-one laptop program, which we've rolled out at the high school level, I've talked to, to enough students and enough teachers who talk about, again, going back to the newcomer students, some of whom, it's not just a matter of giving them a laptop. Some of these students have, have not used a laptop. And so I, I do think it's important to not just, to, to understand that for some students, it's not just access to the laptop, but, but having the basic skill set as well. Thank you, and I look forward to further conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. In light of the hour, which is now 10 o'clock, and we have quite a bit more to do tonight before we are done, I'm going to be very brief. I will just give you a heads up that on Monday, I'm going to really want to dive into, where do we go from here? Because this is an excellent snapshot in time. And I know that we are trying to move to to our new accountability standards that we've laid out in our strategic plan, that the board adopted each of these metrics. However, I do think that it is important, when we look at this report and we see where there are areas that we say, you know, more needs to be done, your wonderful summary chart, as well as the heat map on pre-K, I would like us to talk a bit more about what's the strategy of getting to where we need to be. Because that's really what we need to focus on. And it's not only the strategy of individual buildings, but it's the strategy of how we apply our limited resources to ensure that we achieve these goals. And so, that's really where my focus will be. And in that, along those lines, I'm going to be looking at the pre-K piece, the access to math piece. Dr. Presidio, you know, that's one of my passions, is access to accelerated math in all of our elementary schools, because that's really how you address the access at the middle school level. And then, finally, really taking a deeper dive on how we ensure access to opportunities and success for our exceptional students with disabilities. And so, I look forward to that broader discussion on Monday, in which both Ms. McLaughlin and Ms. Evans will be managing that work session. I will remind everybody to please read that report. And now, I'm going to go on to the rest of the meeting. So, thank you very much, Dr. Presidio. We appreciate all you do for us.
Thank you very much.
Ms. McLaughlin, I'm going to call on you for a motion.
I move that the $150,000 currently in the Office of Equity budget allocated in May 2018 as a placeholder for a hearings officer position be converted to a 1.0 Ombudsman, Special Education Specialist position.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Evans. Ms. McLaughlin, would you like to speak to your motion?
I'd be happy to, and given the late hour, I hope people will forgive me for trying to be brief. But essentially, this is something that I'm very excited that Superintendent Braybrand has brought to the board for support, and I could not be more enthusiastic about it. Someone who has believed strongly for years that this will enhance the way that our division serves our families, and I'm so excited with how well-received our Ombudsman has been in this very first year of operations. Special thanks to Armando Perry, our Ombudsman. It's my understanding that over 300 families have reached out to that office, and 94 of those were special education-related. And so, in an effort for FCPS to continuously improve its services to our students and families, and in particularly this area, I'm thrilled to bring forward this proposal for the board's consideration this evening.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Evans?
Yes, I too want to, first of all, thank Dr. Braybrand for starting the Ombudsman's office. This was something that I had wanted to see us do for many years, and you got this done, and I think it's a marvelous addition to our school system. I try to tell everybody I can think of about it and advertise it in newsletters because they do wonderful work, and particularly, Mr. Perry. I know he's been out in the community quite a bit, letting people know that they have brochures in many languages, I think it's eight or nine languages, to let everybody know and how to reach them. So, this, what we're doing tonight, is another great addition to the Ombudsman's office. The biggest area that they have had in the first year is for special education questions. People calling the Ombudsman's office, asking for help either on a specific situation or simply trying to get information. So, I think it will help us a great deal, it will help families a great deal, to have somebody with a specialty in this area. So, I strongly support this addition and hope all of the, all of my colleagues will support it as well.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Mr. McElveen?
I'm also very pleased to support this additional position in that office. I think, you know, the way this board has talked about the Ombudsman position in the past, perhaps differs with how it's currently conceived, but as far as I can tell, it's working, and it's certainly taking, it's assuming responsibility for things that would otherwise have to be handled by the School Board Office or other folks throughout the system. And frankly, it's one and a half, or two people right now. And so, the more we can bolster that office, I think the more pressure it relieves from the rest of the system, and it helps people get answers quicker than possible, than they currently do. So, we know that special education is one of those areas that is hard to navigate. And I think this is a position that is appropriately going to be put in this office.
Thank you, Mr. McElveen. I don't have anybody else showing a wish to speak, so I'm going to take the chair's privilege before we, before I call for the vote. I too want to thank Dr. Braybrand, and more importantly, I want to thank the community because this is a recommendation that came to us from the exceptional students with disabilities community. And that is one where listening to our parents and our families, to hear what they want and what they feel they need is what a caring culture does. So, I'm very appreciative of this, and I'm very supportive of it. I do want to urge the superintendent, as we are restructuring that Ombudsman office with this vote, where we are, I'm especially pleased because this is money that was originally going towards a hearings officer, if I remember correctly, and we're reusing it for directly supporting families. I think this is a great use of funding. But I will urge the superintendent to work with the Equity Office and perhaps realigning that Ombudsman position that we already have to create a place where our teachers and professional educators can come and get support. Because it was very clear tonight, and I've heard from others, the importance of having a support system for those educators as well. So, with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of moving $150,000 currently in the Office of Equity budget allocated in May 2018 as a placeholder for a hearings officer position be converted to a, one Ombudsman, Special Education Specialist position. All those in favor? And that is unanimous with Ms. Schultz away from the table. Mr. Moon has left for the evening, as has Ms. Palchuk. So, that motion passes. Yes, Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, just briefly, I did want to add that at the board's work session, it was raised by the community, and many of us appreciated this added portion of the discussion, which is that, right now, FCPS has procedural support liaisons that work with our families, particularly in ensuring that the IAPs process goes well. And I just wanted the public to understand that while we are very pleased to support this new specialist position, we did have the conversation with Dr. Braybrand about ways in which our division could continue, continue in its efforts to strengthen the procedural support liaison role in helping our families. And so, we certainly want to encourage the public who are engaged in this work to continue to let us know how we can work cooperatively in enhancing our services to families.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. I now call on Ms. Darinak Kovacs for a motion.
I move that .6 million to add safety-stopping devices for movable walls be allocated in FY19 using the School Board Flexibility Reserve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McElveen. Ms. Darinak Kovacs, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, briefly. As we discussed in our work session last week, both Mr. Plattenberg and Ms. Burden indicated that accessing our flexibility reserves will allow for a more expedited sensor procurement process. And as the lead time for the sensors is approximately three to four weeks, providing this early funding at this time moves us further to our goal of retrofitting the folding partition doors with the new sensors, and then they'll be able to be fitted during summer vacation time. So, I look forward to your support on this motion. Mr. Moon, as we know, had to leave early, but he wanted to let me know that he expressed his support for this motion.
Thank you, Ms. Kovacs. Mr. McElveen, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, I wanted to thank Ms. Darinak Kovacs for her pioneering of this effort. You know, as soon as this came, this issue came to light, she was immediately looking for solutions. And I'm grateful to Jeff Plattenberg and his team for bringing to the board a reasoned approach to deal with the issue at hand. I know that the governor and other folks will be signing a bill on this issue in the coming weeks in our community, and I'm glad that they're moving forward at the state level as well. However, it should be noted that this board did find a way to make this move forward as soon as conceivably possible, and I'm grateful to Ms. Darinak Kovacs for that.
Ms. Schultz?
So, while I am going to be supporting the motion, I do want to, because last time we had a little hiccup in Robert's Rules when we had our third quarter budget review, and we didn't actually get a chance to speak to the motion. I did get a little time yielded back to explain my no vote, and this is part of, this is one of the reasons, not this specifically, but this in the generic sense, that, you know, staff frankly brought forward a third quarter budget review that basically shoved all the extra money into staffing and beginning balance. And now, we're digging into a flexibility reserve that has already had money pulled out for legal and for the renaming of Jeb Stuart to Justice. And to me, it is the cautious watching of these quarter budget reviews that that's the time for us to do these instead of pulling from a flexibility reserve. So, I feel like, Ms. Darinak Kovacs, you've sort of become the goalie on this, and I don't think it should be up to the board to have to play the goalie to find the money at the end from, you know, the last ditch. This is, this is what those quarterly budget reviews are for. And I'm a little bit nervous because I understand, I've spent the last several weeks in my schools almost daily, and the concern that we're 55% burned on our staffing reserve already, and that maybe with some of the numbers not right, I think we're going to be in a pinch. And so, you know, I wish we had done it earlier, is basically what I'm saying. I appreciate the effort that you made to do it now, but I do think that we, as a board, have to be more mindful when those quarterly budget reviews come, that if something needs to be done, we do it then, we don't wait. Especially on something as important as this is, we need to take the leap or push staff to help us make the leap earlier. So, I appreciate you doing it.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. I too will support this motion. I welcome the motion, and I think that that is what the Flexibility Reserve is actually designed, to address emergency situations and situations of unexpected cost. This is certainly an area where none of us would ever want to have this cost be unexpected because the cause was so tragic. And it is with that, that we are all very sensitive to not only retrofitting the doors, but ensuring that we have a safe, safe measures in place for all of our schools. So, once again, thank you very much, Ms. Darinak Kovacs, for your leadership in this area. And with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of moving .6 million to add safety-stopping devices for movable walls be allocated in the fiscal year 19 using the School Board Flexibility Reserve. And that is unanimous with both Mr. Moon and Ms. Palchuk having left for the evening. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provides for consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through the board review, and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be reviewed, removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 6.01, adopt the attached resolution requesting the Board of Supervisors to approve and to take all necessary and appropriate action to place on the ballot for the November 2019 general election, a school bond referendum in the amount of $360 million. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. New business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 7.01, approve the fiscal year 20 budget as detailed in the agenda item. 7.02, award a contract for the Chantilly High School Science Room Modification Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the School Board. 7.03, award a contract for the McLean High School Science Lab Conversion Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the School Board. 7.04, award a contract for the South Lakes High School Softball Field, Number 2 Lighting Replacement Project, to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the School Board. 7.05, approve recommended media and lesson objectives as detailed in the agenda item and as reviewed and recommended by the Family Life Education Curriculum Advisory Committee. 7.06, approve the Strategic Plan Goal 1 Student Success Report as detailed in the agenda item. Item 8, Superintendent Matters. Next on the agenda is the Superintendent Matters. I call on Dr. Braybrand.
Thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders. Just briefly, we have had Teacher Appreciation Week, and it's been a wonderful time, the week of May 5th through the 11th, to go out and see all the things great teachers are doing. I want to join many others across the school district who've already recognized and appreciated the commitment and dedication of all of our FCPS teachers. We know the impact they have every day, and I want to continue to work with the School Board and leadership team to do everything we can to model and uplift the caring culture that lets these teachers know that they are appreciated for all they do. I want to mention just one teacher. Heather Jones has taught Family Consumer Sciences at Carl Sandburg Middle School since 2012, and she was named a 2019 National Family and Consumer Sciences Teacher of the Year by AAFCS. She was recognized for her use of cutting-edge methods, techniques, and activities to provide stimulus and visibility to family consumer sciences. She's also the department chair for Career and Technical Education. So, really, really just proud of her and everything that she has done. And we have so many amazing teachers in Fairfax, and I wanted to say, thank them again for all that they do, and thank this board for really supporting through the budget each year, the kind of resources and supports that our teachers need to be successful, and really finishing the work that I know you've done long before I arrived here, to recognize that we were behind on teacher pay and made a multi-year commitment to get it done. We are catching up. We will catch up, and now, we will start to move ahead and really make sure that we're attracting and retaining the best and brightest teachers across the country here in Fairfax County. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. Next on the agenda is- Next on the agenda is board reports, and I call on Ms. Hines for an update on the Joint Environmental Task Force.
Okay, yes, thank you. So the Joint Environmental Task Force, or the JET, was approved by both boards at our last joint meeting, which I want to say was early April. And basically, what the two boards decided to do was to create a task force of four board members altogether, two supervisors and two school board members, to begin to work on how the school board and the Board of Supervisors, the school system and the county government can work together on sustainable energy and climate action. So the four board members are Ms. Corbett Sanders and I for the school board, and supervisors Penny Gross and Dan Stork for the Board of Supervisors. Well, we had our first meeting on April 30th, and it was just a logistics meeting. We had Superintendent Braybrand and County Executive Brian Hill were there as well. And our next meeting will be on May 28th, and at that meeting, we will begin to discuss the proposed mission of the, of the Joint Economic Task Force and the membership of the task force. The meetings are public. They will be posted and minutes taken and posted. Good news that we learned at the first meeting is that the Board of Supervisors, just a couple of weeks ago, adopted a comprehensive climate action plan, the C cap, which is Community Wide Energy and Climate Action Plan. And the foundational question for the Joint Economic Task Force is how the school board and FCPS can support that comprehensive work that is so important for this community. We will definitely keep the board and the community up to date.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Now we have Board Matters, and I call on Mrs. Strauss.
And I do want to congratulate and wish well all of our wonderful teachers in Fairfax County Public Schools as Teacher Appreciation Week, and you spoke very well, Dr. Braybrand. Thank you. And I know there were many activities in our local schools celebrating our teachers. I would like to take a moment to congratulate the Rising Phoenix Robotics Team, who won the Design Award at the 12th Annual Vex Robotics World Championship in Louisville. They were competing against 418 middle school teams from 40 nations, and the team was made up of Samantha Lee of Spring Hill Elementary School, Daniel Wu of Churchill Road Elementary School, Cynthia Wu, David Han, and Sophie Lee of Cooper Middle School, and Pranav Anamandla of Longfellow Middle School. This has been a distinguished team, and this is the third time that a local team has won the Virginia State Championship title. Hardworking children and wonderful support from their families and other engineers in the community. So congratulations to the Rising Phoenix 998 team. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz.
Yes, and I would like to thank the West Springfield Elementary PTA for inviting me. I joined them. I spent a great time, was it just today? I can't even, I can't even keep my days straight, with Jay Pearson, our interim region for Assistant Superintendent, and my colleague Ms. McGlaughlin, with Daniel Smith, our new Lake Braddock principal, had a wonderful couple of hours with him, White Oaks Principal Richardson and Principal at White Oaks, and Principal Mukai at West Springfield. I do want to highlight a speaker, actually, it was the video earlier, the concerns about opt-out for families. We have a lot of families of varying backgrounds in Fairfax County, a lot of different professionals, diplomats, people who work in the intelligence community, who work in other kinds of alphabet soup communities, military, people in witness protection. There are a lot of reasons why people seriously, or just for the, trying to protect their children's exposure on the internet from, you know, child predators. And so I do think that taking the privacy of families' requests for opt-out needs to be taken very seriously by the division, and I look forward to doing whatever I can. I myself opted my children out for, and have for many years. So I have two other things I want to congratulate, and I wish I could have been with him. We have a very special member of all of our employees on our staff, Brian Hazard, the wrestling coach at Robinson, has been inducted into the Virginia chapter for the National Hall of Fame for Wrestling, and joins his father, who was also an inductee to the National Wrestling Hall of Fame. And I am just so proud of him, and having been a coach for, for my son, he is a unique educator. And the last thing I would like to highlight is I met with families who have experienced, sadly, their students experienced bullying in our schools, and they're looking, instead of just, you know, dwelling on the problem, I want to share with my colleagues, they have formed a 501(c)(3) and are publishing books and producing professional development for educators and working with a national speaker on bullying, and he is actually coming. His name is, his name is Paul Cofflin. He has written many books, but Free Us From Bullying: Real Solutions Beyond Being Nice. He is being brought by the organization. This is a Fairfax County parent whose son experienced unfortunately severe bullying in one of our middle schools and had to, had to drop out and was not performing particularly well in our middle school, and now is three credits short of graduating from high school as a 15-year-old. The book is called Bullying, Bullyed, Broken, and Redeemed, and they are bringing this gentleman piercing the darkness of adolescent bullying and just the devastation that this can have, not just on the student, but on the entire family. And it's on Wednesday, May 29th at 7:00 PM. People can get the information from Bullyed, Broken, and Redeemed, and I hope that we can continue to work with our families to, and our staff to end bullying and what that does to students, how that changes the trajectory of their lives potentially.
Ms. Evans?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At our last meeting, we recognized Law Day, and I want to report that the Law Day event at Annandale High School was absolutely fantastic. The ABA president came in, Bob Carlson, and several other ABA leaders from around the country, as well as CNN reporter Jim Acosta, correspondent Jim Acosta, and it was a wonderful conversation with a panel of student journalists from the award-winning ABLAST newspaper. And so I just want to congratulate Annandale High School on, on having that very successful event. I was thrilled to go to the Special Education PTA Award Ceremony Dinner on Saturday night. It was a very lovely and elegant event, so congratulations to SEPTA for putting this on, and to all the nominees and, and award winners that night. It was very, very inspiring to hear all of the work that's being done and just all the tremendous stories that, that were told that night. So, so I was delighted to, to hear, to hear about all of those efforts. And speaking of inspiring, to, I attended the Hispanic Leadership Alliance, excuse me, Scholarship Award Banquet this last week, and Dr. Braybrand did an excellent job of addressing the group in Spanish. He even told a couple of jokes in Spanish, I believe, so that's, that was very impressive as well. And the, the stories were extremely inspiring, and I, there, this year, the number of scholarships that the HLA gave out that night went to 20, was expanded to 20 scholarships for, for their students. And a special shout out to the five Justice High School students, the most of any high school, so I'm very proud of that. There were, there were laughs, there were tears, so it was a great event. And last but not least, I, I just want to thank all of the teachers out there. We have so many who do, they're, they're everything to our students, to our kids, and to our families, so very much want to recognize Teacher Appreciation Week. And last but not least, Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there.
Ms. McGlaughlin.
Yes, I want to add on to what my colleague, my colleague Ms. Evans said about the Annandale High School Law Day. I enjoyed being there with Ms. Evans, along with our other colleague Karen Keys-Gamara, who joined us. And I did also want to make note that Jim Acosta of CNN is actually an Annandale High School alumnus. He is shamefully youthful in his looks, and when I found out he was not too much younger than I am by graduation years, it was even more humbling. But he did a fantastic job of really talking to students about the First Amendment, and the goal of this event is to try and help people understand that the law and getting a law degree is really a highly versatile opportunity for careers. And so the American Bar Association that sponsored this just did tremendous job. And Ms. Evans and I will follow up with Dr. Braybrand offline because unfortunately, we did not hold up our promises to the community about providing better media support and coverage for that, and that was unfortunate. I also did want to just share with Dr. Braybrand and my colleagues that the last two weeks, I've visited nine of my schools, and Dr. Braybrand, I just want to praise you for the incredible leadership that we have in the buildings. Ms. Evans and I were at Poe and Annandale High School together. I was at Ravensworth Elementary, Fairfax Villa, Cardinal Forest, Keene Mill, and as Ms. Schultz noted, we were at Lake Braddock together today. The Lake Braddock Student Government Association and Support of Teacher Appreciation Day brought in Captain Cookie. And if you've never heard of Captain Cookie, it is a mobile food truck that brings in warm, fresh baked cookies with ice cream in the middle for an ice cream sandwich, and it is heavenly, and it's incredible. Definitely a sugar high comes out of that. But that was for the staff and employees, and just a wonderful reflection of the support that Lake Braddock community of educators were getting from students. I also wanted to just make note that Ms. Corbett Sanders and I did get a chance to meet with FCFT, members of their board, as well as many veteran instructional assistants, and Dr. Braybrand. They certainly shared for us how important it's going to be for us to look with great intentionality about fair compensation. They're all working 40-hour weeks, providing direct instruction, and we, we need to do some better benchmarking. And I know you're committed to that work too, and we did share that with them, that you recognize it's important. And tomorrow, I will be going to my own children's elementary school, Little Run Elementary. So with that, Happy Mother's Day, and to all of our teachers, as the daughter of a teacher, thank you for bringing your passion, your energy, and your joy to the classroom every day. We will continue to do our work at the school board level to try and bring passion and joy back into your experiences in the classroom as well.
Thank you, Ms. McGlaughlin. Ms. Darnatt Kofax?
Thank you. This time of year is always a wonderful time to see all the great accomplishments at the end of the year of our students. So I had the privilege of being able to see some of these things. For the first time, I went to something called Fashion in Motion, and that's by our Fashion Academy at Fairfax High School. This was a full-fledged fashion show where teach, where, where the, the kids in Fashion Classes One and Two put, put together outfits. They were amazing. They had to do five different looks, and it was a full-fledged, it was like we were sitting in Manhattan, but it was Fairfax High School. And so if you've never been, I encourage you to do that because wonderful teacher there has, has, has passion, and the kids are just so excited. It's, it's one of those things that we should be very proud of. Another thing is Rose Hill Elementary School, their entire school is able to audition for something called Rose Hill Players, and they had kids from kindergarten through sixth grade at a musical called Let the Games Begin. It was fabulous, and there is a veteran teacher there who has been doing this for over 20 years, and he and his team are amazing. So thank you for inviting me and letting me share that afternoon. I also went to see a fabulous production of Peter Pan at Mark Duane Middle School, where they, where Peter and Wendy and the whole crew flew. So that was pretty amazing. I had the opportunity to look at the benchmarking at the Student Services Advisory Councils at both Hayfield Secondary and Edison High School, where they, you know, their, their advisory council had certain, you know, levels that they wanted to attain, and they talked about the successes there, so that was wonderful to see. We, many of us were at the retirement, the ceremony, so congratulations to all of our retirees as you begin that next chapter in life, and thank you for all that you have contributed to our schools and to our families here. And also, I was able to, we have some amazing partnerships. The Washington Redskins Foundation, as well as the Capital Area Food Bank, partnered with Woodlawn Elementary School, and they were, no, Mount Vernon Woods. I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. Mount Vernon Woods Elementary School. And it was very exciting for the students and the teachers and fans like me to see both Ryan Kerrigan, players, Ryan Kerrigan and Ryan Anderson there, you know, providing their services to share at the food market that, that day. And as my colleague said, Happy Mother's Day to all the moms out there and teachers. You are the ones that make the big difference in all of our students' lives, so thank for, thank you for all that you do, not just this week, but every week in Fairfax County.
Thank you, Ms. Darnatt Kofax. Mr. McAlveen?
So I have a question for Ms. McGlaughlin. Why, why did you not bring Captain Cookie with you tonight? We definitely need that as we go back into closed session. So I agree with Ms. Darnatt Kofax about Fashion in Motion. I do believe it's the, the best yet. I think I've gone for the past seven years, seven or eight years, and it was always an incredible event. Also had the pleasure to join Ms. Karen Corbett Sanders at the Holland Meadows Earth Day Celebration. They are building their new garden in their renovated property, so it's very, very nice. And there were free smoothies, so I think we're noticing a theme here with food, yes, made by, by bicyclists. Also had the privilege of going to the NAWA Teacher Appreciation Dinner with a number of my colleagues. NAWA is really doing a great job making, making their, their voices heard on the issue of curriculum internationalization and also ethnic studies and making sure that our curriculum does incorporate the views of all of our, our folks from different backgrounds. I did have the honor of appearing in two productions of Thomas Jefferson's 25th Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee. I unfortunately was dismissed very early in the spelling bee, but I promise in real life, my spelling is better than what was portrayed. This past weekend, the SEPTA Awards Ceremony was really a truly impressive event, and I do want to congratulate colleague Sandy Evans for being one of the nominees for community advocacy. So that was great to see our board represented on the stage. And finally, I do want to share a message on behalf of Mr. Moon. His plane was delayed because the captain's seat was broken, but they have repaired the captain's seat, and he is now on his way, and I hope he gets to Urbana-Champaign by the time our closed session ends. Good night.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too am looking forward to meeting Captain Cookie. I'm sure he will be a friend of mine, given what Ms. McGlaughlin described for us. I'm going to take a few moments here tonight to do a little more than just say Happy Mother's Day. First and foremost, thank you to all the mothers here at the dais. First and foremost, thank you to all the mothers here at the dais and in the staff area. There is no more important person in any family, and frankly, to any person than their mother. There's a, there's a saying that, that I heard that's, went something like this, I'm not sure I've got it exactly right, but basically, the saying is, God couldn't be everywhere, so he created mothers. Because they, they are the, the person in each child's life who, who takes care of all the details and makes themselves available at all times. I'm going to ask the indulgence of the board for a minute to talk about my own mother. She was born in the middle of the Great Depression in the Midwest, was a young child during World War II. She was a high school student in the 50s. I have the pictures that show her wearing poodle dresses to prove it. And at that time, she suffered a tragedy, and she lost a leg to cancer. And it was her senior year, and she had been voted most likely to succeed. And she did not disappoint her peers despite that tragic event. As a young mother in the 60s, she, she married my father, and, and they started their family in the 60s and went on to have seven children and now have 19 grandchildren. And so during those period, during those years when she was raising my brothers and sisters, I'm the sixth of seven, she got to see the 70s and my experience in the 80s. And then I went off to college. And then in the 90s, she then took up a profession in real estate and became an agent for RE/MAX and sold real estate in Northern Virginia until her retirement not too long ago. And, and so I think that it's worth talking a little bit about all of those things that moms do, and, and I'll have my own mother in mind as I talk about this, because there is one word, I think, that could describe your mother best, and that is the love that they give. And, you know, they're there to encourage you when you have been disappointed. They care for you when you feel alone. They protect you when you're threatened. Advocate for you when you can't speak. They nurture you. They organize you. They plan for you. They push you to be a little bit better. They create a home environment that I remember distinctly as a child, and, and my mom cooking and directing us all around to, to help out, and through that, teaching us that we all are part of that home community and all have to participate and give and support of everyone else. And through that, we learn about sacrifice and the giving and the sacrifice that we all know is the best way to engage, not just in our families, but in our communities as well. And of course, a mom is the primary educator of her child. My own wife taught all of our kids to read, you know, and I, she loved every minute of sitting with the books on the couch, reading stories over and over to the kids. But moms also volunteer. Moms advocate, I think, as almost every mother here at the table has been a tremendous advocate. Moms also pass on the faith to their children that they have. And of course, in this Teacher Appreciation Week, there's no doubt that the moms are also our primary source of teachers in our schools, and so they're teaching our children. So there's nothing, nothing so strong, I think, as a mother's gentleness, and certainly nothing so fierce as a mother's love. And so, Mom, Happy Mother's Day. I love you, and I look forward to being with you this Sunday.
Ms. Hines.
Yes, I wanted to thank the Vienna Optimists Club. Last week, they had their Helping Hands Awards, where they recognize and celebrate a sixth grader from each of the Vienna-area elementary schools who's been nominated by their teachers for their community spirit. And it was just wonderful to meet all those wonderful kids and their families and to celebrate them. They have the National Arab American Women's Association Teacher Appreciation Dinner. I was also there last week. That's a very effective advocacy organization that proves that our diversity makes us better and smarter and stronger. SEPTA Awards were so much fun over the weekend. It was, it was great to be there. Another great advocacy organization that's making our community better and our schools better. And the Rest in Opportunity Neighborhood Meeting last night, those are always great opportunities to hear from the neighborhood ambassadors, and this is a unique position in the Opportunity Neighborhood Program, where you have people who live in housing complexes and basically serve as advocates and leaders and liaisons to all of their neighbors in that, in that housing project with all the community partners that are supporting the Opportunity Neighborhood Program. So it's, it was, it's always very inspiring to be at those meetings. And finally, as a teacher myself, I want to thank all the parents and kids out there who are treating teachers this week. It's a, it's a wonderful thing to get the little handwritten notes from the students and, you know, the coffee and donuts on Monday morning was much appreciated. Everything you do, it may seem small, but it really makes a big difference to teachers at this time of year. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. I too would like to thank our teachers this week during Teacher Appreciation Week, as well as there are two other appreciation weeks this week. One is bus drivers, so I do want to thank all of our bus drivers. I had the opportunity to meet with a group of them this week, and as I expressed to them, I look at our bus drivers as our ambassadors, that they're the first to greet our students in the morning and the last to say goodbye to them at the end of the day. And so they play a very special role, as do our school nurses, and it is Nurses Appreciation Week. So thank you to all of our professionals that do such an excellent job of really creating the caring culture that is F C P S. Would also like to do a shout out to United Communities, formerly U C M, which celebrated their 50th anniversary this past Friday. And they are an incredible organization, a heart of the community in Mount Vernon and Lee, offering services and partnering with us in the community schools of Mount Vernon Woods and Walt Whitman. Also wanted to thank Airbus and United Way for their STEM in the Schoolyard event this past week. It was incredible. And I too enjoyed the SEPTA event on Saturday evening, and I was so glad to share that experience with so many of my colleagues. And then again, on Sunday, with the Northern Virginia Regional PTA, where many of our building leaders were also recognized there. And then I did something fun with my mom this past weekend. I actually went to see Cinderella at West Potomac, and it was just wonderful. My mom's in her 80s, and taking her to the matinee, I thought she was going to enjoy the show, but I think she enjoyed all of the little girls in their princess dresses more than the show, even though the show was fantastic. And also want to thank Dr. Braybrand and soon-to-be Dr. Dade for the incredible evening last night with Ventures and Community, where we began asset mapping between the requirements for our schools in the Route 1 corridor, their need for support from our faith-based community, and the faith-based community identifying areas where they can be supportive of each of the schools. So that's a wonderful dialogue we started earlier this year, and it continues. Also want to wish the Communities of Trust happy anniversary. They are celebrating their fifth anniversary this next week as well. So Happy Mother's Day, everybody. And with that, we are going to go into closed session again, and I will make the motion. The board will now make a motion to go into closed meeting to, one, discuss and consider disciplinary and other mass matters concerning one or more students pursuant to Section 2.2 3711a II of the Code of Virginia. And two, actually, we don't need to do that. That's all we will be doing tonight. So if I have somebody who will make the motion? Motion made by Ms. Evans, seconded by Ms. Schultz, all those in favor, Ms. Hines, Mr. Wilson, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Darinette Kofax, Ms. Evans, Ms. Schultz, Ms. Strauss, Ms. Corbett Sanders, and everybody else is away from the table. That motion passes. We're in closed.